Item 1.03, I call on Mrs. Schultz for a recognition.
As one of the board members who actually has children in FCPS schools, them all being boys, this is a particularly appropriate appreciation for me to have, and I could use some of them at my house. This is a, we have Custodian Appreciation Week coming up. These are the people who clean up after our children and keep our schools beautiful. The school board recognizes the hard work and unending dedication of the custodians who work for Fairfax County Public Schools. Our custodians are often the first employees to arrive in the morning and the last employees to leave at night. By providing clean and safe school environments, the custodians at FCPS have a direct impact on the educational success of our students. Many custodians take additional training, leading to certification as professional custodians. The week of February 22nd to 26th has been named Custodian Appreciation Week to recognize and thank our dedicated custodians whose attention to detail and high standards affect all students, employees, and many members of the community. In addition, each worksite for Fairfax County Public Schools also acknowledges their great support for staff during Support Employee Appreciation Week, which is April 18th to the 22nd, 2016. At this time, I would like to invite any members of our custodial and facilities department staff in the audience to join us for a picture with the school board. Come on up.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. That was a pleasant surprise.
And we have a little treat for you at your places, too.
Yes, thank you. We did get a treat. Thank you so much. To the, from the leadership team, that's very kind. All right, 1.03, I call on Mrs. Schultz for a recognition.
As one of the board members who actually has children in FCPS schools, them all being boys, this is a particularly appropriate appreciation for me to have, and I could use some of them at my house. This is a, we have Custodian Appreciation Week coming up. These are the people who clean up after our children and keep our schools beautiful. The school board recognizes the hard work and unending dedication of the custodians who work for Fairfax County Public Schools. Our custodians are often the first employees to arrive in the morning and the last employees to leave at night. By providing clean and safe school environments, the custodians at FCPS have a direct impact on the educational success of our students. Many custodians take additional training, leading to certification as professional custodians. The week of February 22nd to 26th has been named Custodian Appreciation Week to recognize and thank our dedicated custodians whose attention to detail and high standards affect all students, employees, and many members of the community. In addition, each worksite for Fairfax County Public Schools also acknowledges their great support for staff during Support Employee Appreciation Week, which is April 18th to the 22nd, 2016. At this time, I would like to invite any members of our custodial and facilities department staff in the audience to join us for a picture with the school board. Come on up.
Item 1.03, I call on Ms. Palchik for a recognition.
Well, I'm honored that my first recognition is for National Career and Technical Education Month, which is February 2016. Career and technical education prepares both youth and adults for a wide range of careers, from nurse to computer technician. These careers may require varying levels of education, from high school to post-secondary certificates to two- and four-year college degrees. The subject areas most commonly associated with career and technical education are business and information technology, trade and industrial, health and medical sciences, family and consumer sciences, marketing and technology education. As part of the career and technical education program here in FCPS, there are six high school academies offering coursework in CTE, fine arts, and world languages. These academies offer high specialized and technical courses that lead to further study at a two- or four-year institution or immediate placement in the workforce. Four of the six academies have designations as Governors Academies in either STEM or health sciences. Students enrolled in CTE program have the opportunity to earn industry credentials that provide valuable workforce credentials. Career and technical education is offered in middle schools, high schools, two-year community and technical colleges, and other post-secondary schools. According to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, 18 of the 20 fastest-growing occupations within the next decade will require career and technical education. At this time, I would like to invite all of the career and technical education staff in the audience to please join us at the dais for a picture. Thank you.
Good to see you.
Hi, how are you?
Good to see you, sir.
I saw that we're excited.
Item 1.05, I call on Ms. McLaughlin for a recognition.
Before I give the recognition, I just want to say that as the parent of a 10th grader in our public schools, I'm deeply grateful for the work that our school counselors do. I have two boys now in college, and when I looked at the Herculean work that our guidance counselors do, especially in preparing those recommendation letters for 12,000 of our graduates each year that are going on to higher education, it's immense workload. And that's on top of trying to help children make really great decisions about the courses that they're studying over their four years in high school, trying to counsel students who have diverse interests and desires, and the kindness and the guidance and incredible work that my family has personally benefited from, and what I hear from so many of the families in my district. I just wanted to make a personal note of thank you for all that you do. And I'm also going to go off script and say, Dr. Garza, thank you for letting us be a school system that understands the value of these positions. As a native Californian, many school systems around the country don't commit the resources to this, and I believe it's one of the things that makes us a very strong and outstanding school system. So with that, it is the National School Counseling Week for 2016. School counseling, the recipe for success. It will be celebrated from February 1st to the 5th to focus public attention on the unique contributions of professional school counselors within the United States school systems. National School Counseling Week, sponsored by the American School Counseling Association, highlights the tremendous impact that our school counselors can have in helping students achieve school success and plan for a career. National School Counseling Week is always celebrated in the first full week of February. Fairfax County Schools employs over 600 counseling professionals, including our school counselors, our directors of student services, and our career center specialists. These professionals are committed to preparing students to become lifelong learners and productive members in a global society. I would like to welcome all of our school counseling staff who are here in the audience tonight to please come forward and join the school board for pictures, and thank you so much for your service to our children.
Okay, item 1.06, I call on Mr. McElvaine for a resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the second year that we have done this, what I view to be one of the most important resolutions that we do every year. This is the result of a strong partnership between Fairfax County Public Schools, the police department, and a lot of our community members who have come together to recognize the importance of human trafficking awareness. This is something that affects all of our community, but it's particularly problematic in the southeastern and northwestern parts of our county. Many of our board members, I know, have attended presentations by this group over the past several years, and I think it's a great way to educate the community and to ensure that we are working on preventative efforts to prevent human trafficking, particularly among our students. So with that, I read the resolution on the Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Whereas human trafficking, a heinous crime, is thought by many Americans to be confined to other parts of the globe, but is instead the fastest-growing criminal enterprise in the world, and is occurring so regularly here in Northern Virginia that our area is now one of the top 10 hubs of teen trafficking in the United States. And whereas human traffickers prey on middle and high school teens, but have also been known to hone their skills in targeting and exploiting psychologically and emotionally vulnerable men, women, and children as young as nine years old at shopping malls, metro stations, bus stops, and via Facebook and other forms of social media. And whereas trafficking victims are from all ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds, and often unaware that they are being carefully manipulated and coerced by their newfound friends until they realize all too late that they have become trapped and are either threatened with or have become actual victims of violence. And whereas Fairfax County Public Schools and the Just Ask Prevention Foundation have instituted a teen sex trafficking prevention curriculum in grades 6 through 10 and 12, and developed effective awareness campaigns that have become models for other jurisdictions. And whereas student groups at Fairfax County High Schools, educators, parents, medical professionals, law enforcement officials, civic organizations, and the business community understand the importance of bringing awareness about sex trafficking to young people, and wish to mobilize students and others in the community in order to create an environment where this crime is not tolerated and its victims are not overlooked, now therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board joins the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors in recognizing the month of January 2016 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Fairfax County, and supports the efforts of all those who are seeking to eliminate human trafficking and its impact on our community.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Ms. Evans. Sorry.
And therefore I move that we pass this resolution.
I apologize. Is there a second to that motion? Ms. Evans, seconds. Mr. McElvaine, would you like to say anything else?
Yes, so at this point, all those members of the community who wish to come forward for a photo with the board, please do so.
Okay, we will have the photo and then vote on the resolution.
Right.
Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, I'll tell you, why don't we hold the photo for just a second, and we'll give board members a chance to speak, and we'll vote on it, and then we'll have the photo. Does that work, Mr. Mc? Thank you. Okay. Ms. Evans, did you want to speak?
Just very briefly, I want to say we have come a very long way in our understanding that human trafficking is not something that just happens somewhere else. It happens everywhere, and even when it remains in the shadows. So it is about most important
Item 1.05, I call on Ms. McLaughlin for a recognition. Sorry, take your time.
Before I give the recognition, I just want to say that as the parent of a 10th grader in our public schools, I'm deeply grateful for the work that our school counselors do. I have two boys now in college and when I looked at the Herculean work that our guidance counselors do, especially in preparing those recommendation letters for 12,000 of our graduates each year that are going on to higher education, it's immense workload. And that's on top of trying to help children make really great decisions about the courses that they're studying over their four years in high school, trying to counsel students who have diverse interests and desires and the kindness and the guidance and incredible work that my family has personally benefited from and what I hear from so many of the families in my district. I just wanted to make a personal note of thank you for all that you do. And I'm also going to go off script and say, Dr. Garza, thank you for letting us be a school system that understands the value of these positions. As a native Californian, many school systems around the country don't commit the resources to this, and I believe it's one of the things that make us a very strong and outstanding school system. So with that, it is the National School Counseling Week for 2016. School Counseling: The Recipe For Success. It will be celebrated from February 1st to the 5th to focus public attention on the unique contributions of professional school counselors within the United States school systems. National School Counseling Week, sponsored by the American School Counseling Association, highlights the tremendous impact that our school counselors can have in helping students achieve school success and plan for a career. National School Counseling Week is always celebrated in the first full week of February. Fairfax County Schools employs over 600 counseling professionals, including our school counselors, our directors of student services, and our career center specialists. These professionals are committed to preparing students to become lifelong learners and productive members in a global society. I would like to welcome all of our school counseling staff who are here in the audience tonight to please come forward and join the school board for pictures, and thank you so much for your service to our children.
Okay, item 1.06, I call on Mr. McElvein for a resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the second year that we have done this, what I view to be one of the most important resolutions that we do every year. This is the result of a strong partnership between Fairfax County Public Schools, the Police Department, and a lot of our community members who have come together to recognize the importance of human trafficking awareness. This is something that affects all of our community, but it's particularly problematic in the southeastern and northwestern parts of our county. Many of our board members, I know, have attended presentations by this group over the past several years, and I think it's a great way to educate the community and to ensure that we are working on preventative efforts to prevent human trafficking, particularly among our students. So with that, I read the resolution on the Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Whereas human trafficking, a heinous crime, is thought by many Americans to be confined to other parts of the globe, but is instead the fastest-growing criminal enterprise in the world, and is occurring so regularly here in Northern Virginia that our area is now one of the top 10 hubs of teen trafficking in the United States. And whereas human traffickers prey on middle and high school teens, but have also been known to hone their skills in targeting and exploiting psychologically and emotionally vulnerable men, women, and children as young as nine years old at shopping malls, metro stations, bus stops, and via Facebook and other forms of social media. And whereas trafficking victims are from all ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds and often unaware that they are being carefully manipulated and coerced by their newfound friends until they realize all too late that they have become trapped and are either threatened with or have become actual victims of violence. And whereas Fairfax County Public Schools and the Just Ask Prevention Foundation have instituted a teen sex trafficking prevention curriculum in grades 6 through 10 and 12, and developed effective awareness campaigns that have become models for other jurisdictions. And whereas student groups at Fairfax County High Schools, educators, parents, medical professionals, law enforcement officials, civic organizations, and the business community understand the importance of bringing awareness about sex trafficking to young people and wish to mobilize students and others in the community in order to create an environment where this crime is not tolerated and its victims are not overlooked. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board joins the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors in recognizing the month of January 2016 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Fairfax County and supports the efforts of all those who are seeking to eliminate human trafficking and its impact on our community.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Ms. Evans. Sorry.
And therefore I move that we pass this resolution.
I apologize. Is there a second to that motion? Ms. Evans, seconds. Mr. McElvein, would you like to say anything else?
Yes, so at this point, all those members of the community who wish to come forward for a photo with the board, please do so.
Okay, we will have the photo and then vote on the resolution.
Right. I thought we'd voted.
Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, I'll tell you, why don't we hold the photo for just a second, and we'll give board members a chance to speak, and we'll vote on it, and then we'll have the photo? Does that work, Mr. Mc... Thank you, okay. Ms. Evans, did you want to speak?
Just very briefly, I want to say we have come a very long way in our understanding that human trafficking is not something that just happens somewhere else. It happens everywhere and even when it remains in the shadows. So it is of utmost importance that we keep educating our young people and our parents about this terrible practice and how to keep our young people safe. So I wholeheartedly support this resolution.
Does anyone else like to speak to the motion? Ms. Strauss, to be followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Not only is there a lot of important work being done to combat this terrible situation, some people are not aware that our own administrators and our principals are very, very watchful of their campuses and surrounding neighborhoods, and I want to thank particularly some of my principals who have done a wonderful job of very calmly but very forcefully keeping an eye on our young people. And it has paid off, and it has, in some cases, saved lives. So I'm very grateful to the work of our building administrators with this.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I would like to second what my colleagues have said and also recognize the opportunity that we share this resolution at the same time as we are celebrating our social workers and career counselors, because they play such an important role for our kids in educating but also keeping an extra eye out for them and providing that safety net. So I very much support this resolution.
Thank you, Mrs. Schultz.
I just want to say, last year I went and worked with the Interfaith Council. I have to say that if you have a regular neighborhood and a regular school and a regular group of friends, you think that this topic does not apply. And one of the worst things that I had to do as a board member was watch this happen to some of the children in the Springfield District Schools in my last term. And it is a frightening outcome that, right under your nose, right in your neighborhood, right down the street, or the student in the desk next to you, this could happen. And it's an uncomfortable topic. It's not like one of the fun things that we deal with, but it is one of the important things that we deal with. And it is important that we not just celebrate the accomplishments and achievements, but that we also be in the practical role of informing the community, the parents and the students, that these risks are out there. And we've had a very tragic example in Virginia, in the Virginia Tech tragedy in Blacksburg, that this can happen. And this is one of my passions, is digital citizenship and making sure that parents and students are better informed about what happens online, because that's part of your life, too. So I appreciate this recognition.
Ms. McLaughlin?
As a former advocate in the community, I just want to make sure that I have an opportunity to say how much I appreciate the advocates in our community from Just Ask Virginia who really did help bring this up to the attention of the Board of Supervisors, the school board, Fairfax County Schools, Fairfax County Government, Fairfax County Police Department. Your role in bringing a voice to this and helping this county, one of the largest in the country, to really understand how we can be proactive and help rescue and prevent tragedies from happening to the various citizens within our community, it's very much appreciated. And thank you for your continued passion in helping Fairfax County do the right thing.
Okay, so the motion is to adopt the resolution recognizing Fairfax County Human Trafficking Awareness Month. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. And so, Mr. McElvein, we have some folks in the audience to bring forward. Come on forward, we'd like to take a photo with you. All right, item 1.07, resolution supporting the VSBA position opposing the charter school constitutional amendment. I call on Mr. McElvein.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is one of... This is extremely timely for us to be discussing this resolution tonight. We received word on Tuesday that the... Currently, a bill has come out of the Senate, a Senate committee, by a vote of seven to six recommending that the Senate take up the charter school amendment issue. The House is supposed to be bringing it up on Monday, so I'd encourage anyone who is interested in this to very quickly go home and contact your representatives. This is an effort that very clearly undermines local control, as the state perennially tries to do. My colleagues will recall a couple of years ago when the... Something called the Opportunity Educational Institution was established for a similar purpose, to take power away from local institutions in governing our schools. So I would encourage all of us to stay vigilant on this, and we will have more news coming next week, I'm sure. So with that, I am going to read the resolution on opposing a constitutional amendment to divest local school boards of the sole authority to approve charter schools. Whereas in its 2016 session, the General Assembly will be considering a resolution seeking a constitutional amendment to divest local school boards of the sole authority to approve charter schools, vesting authority with a gubernatorial-appointed board. And whereas local school boards, which are elected or appointed by their community and entrusted with the authority to supervise schools, are best equipped to assess the needs of their students and the locality. And whereas local school boards are responsible for the outcomes of all schools within the school system, including charter schools. And whereas research has shown that charter school outcomes are mixed, with the majority doing no better than the traditional public schools that feed them. And whereas state authorized charter schools would result in a massive unfunded mandate to local school divisions, costing millions of dollars to local taxpayers. Now, therefore it be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board hereby opposes the resolution seeking a constitutional amendment to divest local school boards from the sole authority to approve charter schools. And so moved.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Corbett Sanders. Is there any discussion, Ms. Corbett Sanders? Do you want to... Do you have anything you want to speak to?
This is really about the empowerment of your local school board to work with the community, to realize the needs of the community in providing the world-class education that students of Fairfax County deserve. And I feel that this resolution has been drafted in a manner which clearly addresses what the core of the issue is. I also believe that at a time when we have significant funding issues and a decrease of funding from the state legislature over the past several years, which has impacted the local schools dramatically, as you can see throughout the state, with more schools asking for money from the General Assembly, I think that their efforts should be better focused on making sure that we fully fund our schools.
Mrs. Schultz?
So the fact that this was drafted as a resolution instead of brought to the board for our discussion, I think is an inappropriate way for this business to have been brought forward, because this board has not discussed this resolution, and there is not unanimity on this board about this. And it is being characterized as anti-local control. The problem is, in the history of Virginia, there are very few examples where charter schools have been approved by local boards. They have obstinately and heels dug in fought any options that have to do with parental control. I'm far more concerned about a parent's control over their child's education than I am about mine as your local government. And to subrogate a parent's will to your local school boards when none of your local school boards in the state are approving even an option. And this... Not these 12, but the previous board had the perfect opportunity of a teacher-driven charter school, completely teacher-driven, brought to us, conceived by teachers, with really incredibly noble goals for serving an underserved population. And even in that circumstance, where we could have, through a teacher-led effort, provided some significant opportunities to students and given parents some choices, even then, when it was teacher-led, the previous board declined to entertain the charter at that time. And the problem is, is that if local boards have control, but they will never give it, then it's a false narrative to say that the control exists within the local board, because there's no evidence that local boards are going to say yes. And my recollection is that I think we've had 12 charter schools approved in Virginia, and I think that maybe only seven or eight are even still a going concern. That's in the entire Commonwealth of Virginia. That's millions and millions of schoolchildren who have absolutely no choice other than homeschool, private school, which may not be within a family's budget. And I don't think that this is as much taking away from a public school system as creating another option, another choice, for some children who struggle. And I've witnessed children who have struggled either academically, discipline-wise, who struggle through being new to the country, with language, with all kinds of barriers. And right now, we're going to entertain tonight a budget that we're struggling to meet the needs that we have. And if somebody else has another option, to not allow the option, to not even allow that the option would happen, is what the boards have demonstrated. So I'm not necessarily saying that I'm in favor of or against, but what I am in favor of is parents having an option if school is not working out for their children. And we have alternative high schools within our system, but we don't have alternative middle schools as a choice, or alternative elementary schools as a choice, when students don't fit kind of a... Within the confines of what our expectations are, or they may have academic impairments. So I don't support this. I don't appreciate that this was brought to us as a last-minute resolution, instead of going through our normal work structure, which would be a forum for us to discuss and have either a work session or decide to bring it to a vote as a result of our regular business. So I am not going to support this resolution.
Ms. McLaughlin?
It's my understanding, Ms. Hines, that while, as a board, we did have this part of our legislative package about our position on charter schools and the importance of having local school boards having the authority on this matter, it's more time-sensitive that the Virginia School Board Association has said, with this legislation progressing and the specificity of the language and the particular legislation, that it was really important that school systems around the Commonwealth, if they feel strongly about that legislation, these types of resolutions are a very public way of affirming to the General Assembly, this is not good legislation. And I very much appreciate the remarks shared by my colleague, Ms. Schultz. But for me, the key matter is, when you're talking about vesting authority with a gubernatorial-appointed board, you have me stopped right there. In terms of a possible charter school proposal, we've gotten from some remarkable Fairfax County teachers. They also said they were not wed to it being a charter school model. They just wanted to bring forth what they thought was something good, and it could actually be even within Fairfax County partnership. And in fact, as it turned out, Fairfax County's work with it was to try to help the charter school, though well-intentioned, had some facilities and infrastructure challenges. And that's what's good about having local school boards involved in this type of decision-making. And on a final note, I lived in Raleigh, North Carolina, and I saw the charter schools. Guess what happens? All the families with means and opportunity know how to get to those charter schools, know how to get their kids into the lottery fast and quick. So I do understand where Ms. Schultz's reservations are, but I think at this time, with the legislations at hand, I want to say that this is appropriate, because we already discussed it as part of our legislation package. But this is about our giving a recognition and support of Virginia School Board Association, so I support it this evening.
Ms. Evans?
Yes, thank you. I want to say that I do wholeheartedly support this resolution. I think it's important to make our statement about local control over these decisions. I was among those that did like the idea that was brought to us from the teachers. It was in my part of the world, and I thought it was a good idea for a variety of reasons. As Ms. McLaughlin said, they were not wedded to the charter school idea. To me, that was something of the exception that proved the rule for me. That was a different idea. It was a different animal than what we typically see from the charter school movement. To my mind, charter schools, generally speaking, simply sap the strength of their local public schools. And so I don't want to see that, and I certainly don't want the state imposing that on us. So whether or not this board, this school system, chose to approve a particular plan, ultimately, it was up to this board and up to this school system whether or not to approve one, and we need to retain that control.
Ms. Strauss?
Thank you. I support this resolution. In Virginia, which is a Dillon Rule state, where we have enough difficulty, our Board of Supervisors are constrained in some of the activities that they can do to provide for local community, because there is still decision-making, particularly with finances, that are left in the hands of the General Assembly. I do believe that the best decisions are made closest to those people who are impacted. Local control of public schools, funding, programs, and the fact that we are now an elected board, which means we are directly responsible to the parents whose children are in our schools, we are directly responsible to the people who pay for the schools and want them and want the programming or don't want the programming. And I think that that is the fair and the more democratic way to go. We don't need another Dillon Rule situation that takes authority and decision-making away from the local community. Many years ago, we had another application for a charter school dealing with services for children with autism, young children with services with autism. We looked very carefully at it. In the end, we actually adopted the entire program ourselves, that the parents were asking for. It turned out it was more cost-effective for the school system to simply adopt and take internally the entire program. The parents were very pleased through the discussion of the application for the charter school. It gave us an opportunity to hear the details, what the parents were asking for, and in the end, I think we served the children, the families, the taxpayers of Fairfax County much more efficiently by, as I say, completely adopting the program ourselves. So I very much support this local control. So, I very much support this local control of schools, I believe is very important. Thank you.
Ms. Huff?
I'm not planning to support this resolution as it opposes a bill that establishes a resolution that will trigger a referendum on our ballot in November, giving voters, including our own constituents, the power to decide if they want this. If the people want the Virginia Department of Education to have the ability to place charter schools, then they can vote that way. If they don't want that, they can vote no in November. I don't know what is closer to home than the voter himself, and therefore will not support this.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I guess the fact that I don't have the legislation gives me pause that I should make a vote on a resolution about it. I'm not familiar with the legislative legislation at hand. All I have is a few references in newspapers and the comments of the board here. I think since it was in our legislative packet, the board has already spoken on its feelings about the, about charter schools. I do, it does resonate with me what Ms. Huff has just said, that it sounds like if it is passed, it actually goes in front of the citizens of Virginia and the parents of Fairfax County to vote on whether or not they would want to implement the change? Maybe I'm misunderstanding. Is that, is that true?
It's a referendum.
Mr. McElvein, is that true? What happens after it passes? Is it, does it go in front of the, for the citizens to make a decision on it, or is it decided?
It's a constitutional amendment.
For a referendum.
That's correct.
So, I, so I guess my feeling is, since the board has already spoken on the, on the legislative agenda, and since we, we don't have the, the referendum and, or the bill in front of us that's being considered by the legislature, I think that, at least I'm in a board position to even have a considered opinion on how I would vote on it. I do think that the fact that the, that there seems to be a poor history of approvals of charter schools does speak to the need to, to enable the creativity of educators in the marketplace to come up with unique solutions. And the example that was given by Ms. Strauss, that the autism program was adopted by Fairfax County schools, actually, is actually quite a disincentive because whoever proposed it must have spent a lot of time and money and energy coming up with what was proposed to the county. And so, I think it's actually tends to stifle, but that's exactly what would happen to proposals to the board, is that those good people in the community, those concerned educators who would like to advance education in the county, have their ideas taken and then swallowed into the county system. So, I guess on, for those reasons, I would say that I'm not ready, and I don't think that, maybe this is a little too early to vote on a resolution about some legislation.
I would just say a couple of things. I, I think, and this is something that we do sometimes. You know how the General Assembly works. It's kind of like a blitz, right? They're down there, and, and the bills come fast and furious. There are hundreds of them. And we do not, that's why we have a legislative program that tries to speak to everything that might come up, right? So, there's a lot of general language in our legislative program. And it is hard to keep up with individual bills. And I, I believe that we have had this bill emailed to us by Mr. Malloy, so we had the opportunity to look at it. I, I don't think that this resolution says anything that we have not already said in our legislative packet, so I think it makes sense for us to support it. My, my general feeling is, you know, local control is, is the mantra until the localities actually start making decisions that the central government doesn't actually like, you know? So, if local governments are not taking this option that they have, well, it must be that it doesn't really make sense at the local level. And that's, until it does, we should have the authority to say one way or the other whether we're going to do it. I, so anyway, I will support this resolution. So, the motion is to, oh, I'm sorry, we have a go-back from Ms. Schultz.
Well, I, I thank Ms. Chairman Hines for, for bringing up that last point, that this resolution doesn't say anything our legislative package doesn't say. So, why are we voting on it? And that's exactly my point. If we used the board table to bring up bills every time there was a change down in Richmond through the course of the session that were already addressed in our legislative package, we could sit here as long as somebody had the opportunity to draft a, a resolution talking about any number of the bills that were in our 180, 100 and whatever-point legislative package. But because this one frankly is political in nature, it has been targeted for a resolution to the table. And I want to make sure we're very clear, because it seems like there was an opaque answer. The bill provides the ability for the public to have a referendum on the ballot in November for the public to decide. So, if this board votes to take down this bill, what it says is, we're taking the right of the people to make the decision, we're supplanting our vote for your vote. And I would never be in support of that. This, this is your option. Now, if the public overwhelmingly votes no on this, then that is the voice that needs to be heard. That is the public discussion that needs to be had. But all the bill in Richmond is doing, that has passed the Senate and is going to the House, is to say, put it on the ballot and let people be heard. And right now, there isn't a vehicle for that voice, not for employee unions, not for individuals, not for advocacy organizations, dyslexia groups, autism groups. You have a right to allow advocacy to happen between now and November by that bill being passed and a referendum going to the ballot and people speaking. Then it will be, be resolved. But I am, I'm not going to support putting myself between you, the voter, and the decision of a parent's choice to at least have the opportunity to vote on it.
Okay. Any other comments? We are ready to go. Yes, Mr. Moon?
Mr. McElvein, I have a question for you. Basically, this resolution calls for our school board, Fairfax County School Board, which is a member of a VSPA, Virginia School Boards Association, supporting VSPA's position. Is that, is that?
That's correct, Mr. Moon.
Because VSPA has already taken a position on this particular legislation-
That's correct.
-and seeking input from member school boards.
That's correct.
I, as a one-board member, and also this school board, as an entity, have all along been consistent in the local control, whether it's just the public schools or it's a charter school's application, even though there has not been any charter school. There have been applications which this board or former boards have taken a look. And, and, and control of that process and grant of such application have always been within our local control. And, and we are the elected body, elected by the residents of Fairfax County. I do not care about the rest of the state, rest of the state, but as far as I am concerned for Fairfax County, I, I strongly believe that we, as an elected body, should retain the control. As such, I support the VSPA's position on this.
I have one more go-back, Ms. McLaughlin?
Yeah, I think it was important just to touch upon a little bit about what we're talking about here with, because I appreciated the, the thinking for Ms. Huff about letting the voters decide. The problem is where we live. We live in Fairfax County, which tends to be quite progressive in its thinking. And look at how difficult it is in the General Assembly to get this Commonwealth as a whole, which hasn't wanted to fund public education as a whole. So, if you put this forward in a constitutional amendment and Fairfax County voters say, no, we don't believe that this serves our community best to have charter schools, but a 50.1% majority of the Commonwealth of Virginia, which could be very different places than Fairfax County and what their public school systems offer, it's now a constitutional amendment, and the whole Commonwealth of Virginia has to follow it. So, I, I do support this, but I did want everybody to understand, this isn't that we would bring it to Fairfax County voters and you could decide what happens in Fairfax County. You could decide what you want, what happens in Fairfax County, but this amendment is going to dictate to Fairfax County what the Commonwealth decided. And that goes back to Ms. Strauss's point of view, which is, you know, this, good decisions happen at the local level, where we answer to, and Mr. Moon made this as well, we answer to the very people that elected us.
Thank you. Ms. Darnett Kofax, do you have a comment?
Yes, I, I'm going to just tag on to what Mr. Moon said. Basically, the, what we're approving with this resolution is talking about allowing to have local elected officials, not an appointed state board, be responsible for determining where our tax dollars could go. And that's what, that's where we're, that's where we're up against, and that's the bill we're fighting, and that's the resolution that talks about that. It's extremely important, as Mr. Moon said, if for whatever reason you do not, you feel that a governing board somewhere else should be that, then you can vote us out of office at another later date and time. But at this point, local control should be within, and speaking to Ms. McLaughlin's point, there are many different systems around the coun, around our Commonwealth. And having a state-run board govern what we know in our county to be what is best for our constituency is something that I, something that I would never not support. And I think it's extremely important to understand for us to be responsible for the people who determine where the local tax dollars go and not the state deciding that for us.
Maybe one more go-back, and then I'd like to call for the vote. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, just a quick question for those with a long history on the board. Has Fairfax County School Board ever approved a charter school application, and what was the history of it?
Ms. Strauss?
Yes. Over time, there have been only two applications, and we can approve them. It is well within our authority to do that. In Fairfax County, fortunately, we have had the ability to operate numerous different kinds of programs within our neighborhood schools. We have alternative schools. We have flexibility to create whatever we want. We do have focus schools, we have magnet schools, et cetera. So, we can do that. Over all the course of all of this, we have only received two applications.
Thank you. So, and to what do you attribute the lack of applications?
Because in general, we, we attempt to be as responsive to our community as possible and provide what the community wants.
Right. So, so I guess the, it seems to me, when I just survey the, the media, charter schools have grown enormously in popularity across the country. But yet, there's been only two applications in Fairfax County, and as far as I know, very few charter schools in Virginia as a whole. And my, my worry is that we need to be forward-thinking and not fearful as we look at the future of education. And, and I guess that would be something that I think we should all take into consideration.
And we can accept charters now. There's nothing prevented. We can have as many charter schools in Fairfax County as this board or the community wishes.
And, and so, so how do we make it, how do we facilitate that? How do we make that, how do we encourage companies that might want to establish a charter in Fairfax County?
Part of it is in what the negotiation is, how much it costs, how you're going to do, where you're going to put it, is a complicated negotiation in order to do it. It is, but it is possible.
I'm sorry, we don't usually do-
Thank you.
-board member-to-board member conversations like this. You know, these are the sort of questions we probably should have asked and answered before we came to the table tonight. Dr. Garza, did you want to say something?
This may be contradictory to what you just said, Madam Chair, but I just wanted to comment, you know, I think we are very open to charter applications. I think the real challenge that we face as a system, it takes money to open up new, in new schools. In fact, I've met with the group that you're talking about. We would have to find a building. It would cost us money to open them up. I think there's opportunity to do that. Certainly, I think we're all open to it, but we can't do it in times when we don't have enough money to sustain our current system. So, that's, I think, a real challenge for us.
Okay. I have Ms. Corbett Sanders, then Mr. Moon.
I would be very reluctant to make decisions on this board predicated on decisions made by prior boards. And so, when I look at this resolution, I look at it as a resolution about who the people of Fairfax County have elected to represent them, who the people of Fairfax County can come to with challenges, with requests for assistance in solving the problems that may take the form of a charter school in the future or may not. And as a, I'm personally very proud of the system that we have in place here in Fairfax County, which is a very transparent system, one in which people are welcome to come to this board and come publicly and advocate for new models. And so, I believe that we would actually be shutting off voices of creativity and innovative solutions if we ceded responsibility to a non-elected board somewhere else in the state. I also think, I would like to echo, the importance of, in a resource-constrained period of time, which we are currently facing, where $800 million per year has been taken out of the education funding in the state of Virginia, we should be looking at ensuring that we put money back into funding public education. And that is why I will support this resolution.
Okay, I have Mr. Moon.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to clarify one thing by asking Mrs. Strauss a question on those two prior charter school applications that had come to a prior, many years ago, prior boards, that Fairfax County School Board has never actually rejected voting no to applications. They have never come to the school board's vote because they had been withdrawn or are not proceeded by the applicant. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. In negotiating the contract and the particulars of the program and what the parents are after, it has never come to the point where there is an agreement on funding place, particular program, as an independent standalone charter school. In the midst of the negotiation, either there just simply was not enough money to make it work, or in the case of the special education, it was determined in the end that the school system could deliver a far better product than what the, what the parents were looking for, and not only a far better product for all children throughout the entire county at, at a more cost-effective, in other words, a less expensive way. And that was, that was a, through a mutual negotiation that went on for quite a while. That was how that one was resolved.
Call the question.
The question has been called. Is, we need a second for calling the question, seconded by Ms. Darnett Kofax. All those in favor of calling the question and voting on it, raise your hand. Darnett Kofax, McElvein, Strauss, Corbett Sanders, Evans, Hines, Moon, McLaughlin, and Palczik, those opposed to calling the question? Huff and Schultz, those abstaining? Are you opposed, abstaining, Mr. Wilson? I'm sorry. Okay, so the question? Opposed, I apologize. So, no one abstained. So, the question has been called, and the question on the table is a resolution in support of VSPA's position opposing the charter school constitutional amendment. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Darnett Kofax, McElvein, Strauss, Corbett Sanders, Evans, Hines, Moon, McLaughlin, and Palczik, those opposed? Huff, Wilson, and Schultz, the motion carries. Okay, item 2.01, citizen participation. The next order of business is citizen participation. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries, or personal attacks on any person. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. If the concern is a group concern, please consider appointing a spokesperson, and while the spokesperson is speaking, those in support may stand to show their support. Tonight, two citizens have signed up to address the board, Steve Greenberg and Kimberly Adams. Mr. Greenberg?
Dr. Garza, Chairman Hines, legendary Mr. Press, senior school board members, my name is Steve Greenberg. I'm president of the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers. I represent outstanding educators in FCPS. I'll be speaking tonight to Gen. Item 1.6, 1.07, but also to the FCPS compensation surveys and to tell you a little information about Congressman Jerry Connolly. Please know that SCFT supports your resolution to stop human trafficking, to protect our children from predators, and to afford them the opportunities to grow and learn in a healthy life environment. The AFT has been very active in this advocacy for many years. To protect our students, I'd like to thank Connie Cordavilla, the Associate Director of Human Rights and Community Relations with the AFT, for her great work. If you look in your package, you'll see a- If you look in your package, you'll see a attachment that has a lot of good resources, including Just Ask VA, Ask Virginia. Also know that SCFT appreciates and supports the VSBA charter school constitutional amendment. And I will tell you, as the only union president who has been on record down in Richmond as speaking on behalf of a public school charter, and who has on his executive board, the gentleman who most recently brought the application to you. I know, Mr. McElvein, oh, you're back, Mr. McElvein. I want you to know, we're going to be down there fighting as hard as we can to kill this thing. This is about private charters. This is devastating to public education. I want to take the time tonight to encourage all FCS employees to take the compensation survey that was sent to us on Monday. Please know how much FCFT cares about getting lots of good feedback on this topic from many sources and all employees. Be clear that FCPS and SCFT are working together on this item. We value each other's input and devices for getting information to this school board so we can all make good decisions on this together. Let there be no confusion about that as you go to your work session on Monday. I'd like to thank the following school board members for agreeing already to participate in a compensation-focused group with our members. Thank you to Ms. Schultz, Ms. Huff, Ms. Palczik, Ms. Hines, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Darnett Kofax, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Evans, and Mr. McElvein, and Mr. Wilson, and Mr. Moon. You guys are both welcome, too. Thank you for taking time to be with our members. Finally, I noticed that Congressman Jerry Connolly had some advice, some very disrespectful advice for our superintendent recently on WTOP News, and he devalued our very serious budget crisis. So I'd like to take an opportunity to tell you a story about who this guy really is so you understand his motivations. A few years ago, when I was just a teacher, I wasn't a union president, but I was on the board, we were invited to go speak to Mr. Connolly when he was the chairman of the Board of Supervisors here in Fairfax County. We, as schoolteachers, wanted to go advocate for money for our children. When we got there, he sat us in his big, round oval office, closed the door, stood at the head of the table, and he goes, "Let me see if I got this right. You've come here to ask me for money, and your union didn't endorse me in the last election? Why don't you go [makes a sound] yourselves?" Now, certainly, I'm not going to say that in front of children. My point is this: What kind of a person would say that? Not someone we should be taking advice from. We know who this guy really is. What concerns me is that his community may be as confused as he is, so I'm going to start educating them immediately. Dr. Garza, thank you for advocating for our school system, our children, and our teachers. Good night.
Ms. Adams?
Good evening, Chairman Hines, members of the school board, Dr. Garza. My name is Kimberly Adams, and I speak as the president of the Fairfax Education Association, representing not only teachers, but also education support professionals. It is always a pleasure to join with the school board to honor all the employees who work so hard for the benefit of Fairfax County schools. As you mentioned earlier, we celebrate National School Counseling Week and recognize our school counselors, the employees who help our students to deal with some of the most challenging moments in their young lives. Whether it's navigating social situations, diffusing conflict, dealing with very adult subjects like human trafficking, death, poverty, and family strife, our counselors are there for our students. Our counselors deserve our support and thanks. They pick up the phone every time, knowing that there's likely a challenge on the other end. Our schools are better for our students and our teachers because of the counselors in Fairfax County, and the FEA applauds their work. We also recognize February as National Career and Technical Education Month, and I honor my colleagues in the CTE department. If any of you want to understand what commitment means, you should shadow a CTE teacher. There are plenty of students in FCPS who pursue life paths that may not include college, and our colleagues in CTE are there to make sure that our graduates have a bright future in whatever field they choose. We need people in all kinds of jobs in our society, and we applaud our colleagues who help prepare the talented young people for our workforce. We specifically thank, in years past, the culinary arts program participants, and we try to use their catering services whenever we can. And finally, and most importantly, over the last couple of weeks with all the snow removal, Custodian Appreciation Week is recognized February 26th through 22nd through 26th, and we honor our custodial staff for being dedicated workers, men and women, who are still there when everyone goes home for the evening, cleaning the floors, sanitizing restrooms, setting up for meetings, mowing lawns, and, yes, shoveling snow. They've kept our schools hazard-free for our students and employees, opening the buildings early in the morning, and making sure that our schools are safe. I have two children myself, and they make a challenge in my own home keeping it clean. FCPS has over 180,000 students, and yet our custodial staff is able to keep our schools running in great condition day after day. We continue along in this year's budget season, and we remember how vitally important all employees are in keeping FCPS world-class. We stand with the community, and we support Dr. Garza's no-cuts budget.
Thank you. Item 2.02, student representative matters. I call on Mr. Press.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening. Before I begin, I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to recognize the members of our school board's student leadership cohort who have joined us tonight. Thank you so much for toughing out some of the heavy business that this board deals with. We really do appreciate you being here. It's wonderful to finally be unburied from the burden of snow and back in school after what has come to be a second winter break. In the spirit of an earlier resolution, I would like to extend my deepest gratitude and thanks to the custodial and security staff for bringing us back to normal this week and for all their hard work while we were all at home. But that time off and that cabin fever gave me some time to analyze the superintendent's budget in even more depth than I already had, which is our primary action item for tonight. I want to share a few thoughts with you all. I followed this budget from beginning to end, or at least maybe to another beginning, sitting on Dr. Garza's Budget Task Force as its student representative, seeing it through to hearings, public engagement meetings, and finally to this board table tonight. I can say I unequivocally and completely support Dr. Garza's proposed budget as it stands. The idea of cuts to student programming, which is virtually all we have left at this point, is as distasteful to me now as it was when I first heard it suggested. As we've heard so many times, now is not the time to divest in education. Rather, it is critical that we invest. Ask any student, and they will tell you this budget reality: Great teachers leave us every year. Class sizes grow, and their classroom resources have become dated and limited. This is becoming a widespread reality. There is no excuse for a division in area of our stature to be like this. And that is why I firmly believe we stand at a crossroads. This budget, therefore, represents hope to me. It's a hope that we can reverse this trend of cuts, hope that we can reassert ourselves as a top destination for educators from across the country, and hope that we can continue to provide a world-class education to our students. Therefore, I urge board members to support this budget and work with our state and local funders to bring the ideas laid out in this budget to reality. Changing gears, I want to thank Dr. Garza and the staff of Chantilly High School for a wonderful business roundtable luncheon yesterday. It was great to interact with business leaders in the area of hospitality and tourism. I was fortunate enough to be joined there by Ms. Corbett Sanders and Mr. Wilson. While I would like to have announced more activities over the past two weeks, obviously, that was a little bit challenging given the weather conditions, but I will say that we have a number of very good things coming in the next few weeks, chief among which, in my opinion, is our upcoming student representative to the school board election at Woodson High School on Tuesday. I would like to ask if there are any candidates for the student representative in the audience, if you'd stand so we can recognize you. Thank you so much for being here. It really is great to have you and see what this is all about. Thank you very much for being here. I'm fortunate enough to be visiting Annandale High School this coming Thursday, to be attending Mountain View and Bryant's winter graduations. I will also be at the Region 1 Listening Tour at Madison High School on February 9th, Region 2 Listening Tour at Annandale on the 17th of February. I look forward to seeing many community members, students, faculty, community advocates there to share your thoughts with us. It really is great to hear from you, and we do value your opinion. I'm also very excited to be attending the Real Food for Kids Food Expo on March 12th at Robinson Secondary. That was recently announced. I look forward to seeing many board members, members of the community, at that event. With that, I wish any students who might be watching an enjoyable long weekend and a happy end to the quarter. To our teachers, I hope you all enjoy a peaceful and much-needed workday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Press. Item 3.01, confirmation of action taken in closed meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were disclosed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed the case, and at this time will make a motion to confirm the recommended action. I call on Ms. Strauss for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who brought a weapon and other prohibited items to school and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Corbett Sanders. All those in favor? Darnett Kofax, McElvein, Huff, Strauss, Corbett Sanders, Evans, Hines, Moon, and Palczik. All those opposed? Schultz, those abstaining? McLaughlin. Okay, the motion passes. 3.02, FY 2017 advertised budget. I call on Mrs. Strauss for the motion.
Thank you. I move to adopt the FY 2017 advertised budget as detailed in the superintendent's proposed budget and as reflected in the agenda item attachment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Darnett Kofax. Ms. Strauss, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I would. I believe that this proposed budget meets our priorities: increased pay for our employees, reinvestment in the teacher salary scale, bringing all of our employees up to a living wage, continuing to reduce and work on elementary class sizes, we must keep them down under 30, and no cuts in student programs that make Fairfax Fairfax. Last year, when this board finished on the FY 2016 budget, we reaffirmed that the priority for the formation of the FY 2017 budget was to reduce class size, especially at the elementary level, and pay. When our superintendent came to us and asked numerous times, "What are your priorities for the formation of the 2017 budget?", those are the priorities. Last fall, when we opened school with 200 vacancies, this underscored our concern for our need to invest in the teacher's scale. The quality of our education, the quality of classroom instruction for our children is directly related to the quality of the teachers in the classroom. We cannot afford to continue the trend of losing some of our best teachers because we have lost our competitive edge in the market. We must stop this. Our parents have told us over and over, the class size counts. We've heard that. We know that. Our teachers tell us that. We must be able to keep at least our elementary classes under 30. We would love to reduce it even more, but at the moment, we have to be reasonable in how we pull back on this. And we certainly are watching our inboxes fill up with hundreds of parent pleas. Fund this proposed budget, no cuts in student programs. I want to thank the Board of Supervisors who have partnered with us at the state level. We have joined a coalition called the Urban Crescent, where we, all of us that represent the urban areas of Virginia, are trying to advocate for an increase in the pie for education throughout Virginia. It was remarked earlier that in Virginia, we are losing over $800 million a year in funding for public schools. A J-Lark report that was presented to the General Assembly shows that the funding formulas have been changed so that, at the moment, the funding for public education is considerably lower. And I know our Board of Supervisors are advocating for some particular, at Virginia, various bills have been submitted to the General Assembly. We will not know the outcome of this until the General Assembly finishes in middle of March. Our job as the school board members is to reasonably state the needs of our schools and of our children. We are the voice for public education. We are the voice for the quality of education that we want for the children in this community. And I believe that this budget speaks to our priorities, reasonably tells our community what it is that we think our children and our schools need, and I believe that it satisfies our priorities, and I urge my colleagues to support it. Thank you.
Ms. Darnett Kofax, did you want to speak to your motion now, or your second?
Sure, I'll speak to it now. As a school board member and a parent of a recent graduate and a child who is currently in the school system, I have personally seen the negative impact brought on by underfunding of our system for several years, and how this has affected my children, students in general, teachers, and classrooms. But after years of cuts, nearly half a billion since 2008, it is time to say enough is enough, and that's what Dr. Garza has done. This budget, while without cuts, is not one that is frivolous, or is filled with frivolous demands, or is filled with hyperbole. It is a budget that reflects only the most pressing, basic needs of our system, but thankfully has no reductions to instructional programs or services to our students. And it adds much-needed funding for our employees, with emphasis to our teachers, those who are at the heart of education for our students. And it also begins to address the larger class sizes that we've had to endure and talk specifically about lowering elementary class sizes. As an elected official, as Ms. Strauss said, my constituency demands me to be responsible steward of our public monies, and I take that very, very seriously. And I can think of no better investment than to make that in quality education for the children in Fairfax County. So I urge my colleagues to support Dr. Garza's budget at this time.
Okay, at this time, I call on Ms. Huff for a motion to amend.
Thank you. I move to amend the main motion by reducing the county transfer request by a total of $4.3 million by increasing state revenue by $3.2 million based on the governor's introduced budget, reducing the living wage expenditure by $1.1 million, increasing expenditures in the Food and Nutrition Services Fund by $1.1 million to fund the living wage and directing the superintendent to determine the steps that Food and Nutrition Services should take to balance the budget of this self-supporting fund.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Schultz. Ms. Huff, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. I have proposed this amendment because I feel like this is an opportunity to demonstrate the seriousness of our commitment to funding our top priority of teacher salary and reducing class sizes. By passing this amendment, we recognize all of the money based on the assumptions we have and make sure we stay focused on our number-one priority of paying competitive salaries for our teachers and reducing class sizes as a direct benefit to all of our students. As Dr. Garza said at our work session, our budget is created based on assumptions and the information we have at the time it is created. By recognizing the $3.2 million from the government's proposed budget, we are using all the information based on assumption put forward to our proposed budget. In addition, I have moved to recognize the Food and Nutrition Employees $1.1 million to the Self-Supporting Fund. When Dr. Garza proposed a step plus 1% MSA for all employees, the Self-Supporting Fund appropriately absorbed that. As way of background, the Food and Nutrition Service Fund has always been self-sustaining, and we do not put money towards its operations. As the fund is responsible for all its operations for food and nutrition, I believe it is acceptable to have all the priorities of the fund taken care of in the fund. Although I've only been on the board for a month, I have not been part of the entire budget process and conversation, I have an interest in supporting this budget for its priorities of teacher salaries and reducing class sizes. I feel like we are better positioned to do so when we recognize dollars where we can and when we place our own dollars towards the priorities, as we are asking the community and taxpayers to do the same. Working together, we can make this happen, and I hope my colleagues can support this motion as we go forward to the Board of Supervisors with our proposed budget. And just as a point of clarification, one of my budget questions was just responded to yesterday afternoon, and thank you for getting back to me. I know you guys have been working hard and understaffed, so I appreciate it. According to the response, the Food and Nutrition Fund will not have to balance a total of $1.1 million, as the number was assuming no MSA or step increase. Yet, we have in a proposed budget a step and 1% MSA increase advertised for our Food and Nutrition Employees, which they have calculated in their balanced budget, implying it should take less than $1 million to bring all Food and Nutrition Employees to a living wage.
No, that's right. Thank you. Ms. Schultz, did you want to speak to your second?
Yes. And for someone who has only been on the board for a month, I can attest to the diligence that Ms. Huff has put towards this motion. And in fact, there was an alternate motion that was equally, if not supremely, appropriate for this evening and for... for this evening and for reasons that this board will continue to struggle with, I think it was pulled from moving forward. That being said, there is, and I think this is my fifth budget cycle saying this, there is in Virginia state code, our requirement, when we take our oath to the Constitution of Virginia to uphold it, a requirement for board members to run school systems with, quote-unquote, "the utmost efficiency." And in order to, I think, have fidelity to those words, when we know that there is an attribution within a self-sustaining fund like Food and Nutrition, then we should, before we finalize, after a year of supposedly dotting our i's and crossing our t's, I think that this is incredibly modest but honest way to recognize a self-sustaining fund that the numbers bear out over time is already provided for in the budget. And frankly, I think with, and as entertaining as it was, and it was entertaining, Mr. Greenberg, but when you get U.S. congressmen feeling like they're sinking into, you know, local budget discussions between county boards and school boards, we're way off the rails in terms of what's appropriate out in public rhetoric. And we need to get back to the importance of correcting teacher salaries, making that a priority, particularly educator salaries in the classroom. And I think that with the type of rhetoric that is occurring and that is out there, the best face that we can put forward so that there is no question when a budget goes to the Board of Supervisors is that we have done, we have done all the appropriate things to recognize the savings where we can. And remember, out of a $2.68 billion budget, this is a, I believe it's a 1/10 of 1%, and into a self-sustaining fund where it's already accounted for. So I think it is a very modest attempt to compromise at something that exists within the budget and can be self-correcting. I think the numbers, over time, bear out, and I think that it will tamp down congressional, you know, federal overreach into local budgets. We have enough problems of our own, and they have enough problems of their own. Let us handle it. And I think this is a good way to get on the start of the real budget discussions going forward over the next couple of months with the Board of Supervisors.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak? Mrs. Strauss?
Thank you. I will not support the amendment, but at the same time, I want to thank Mrs. Huff for working hard on this and for meeting the deadline and letting us know your thoughts and trying to sort of work within the process and promoting discussions. I want to thank you very much for that. The reason I will not support it first is the General Assembly simply has not acted yet on the budget. By the middle to the end of March, we will know, and at that point, we certainly, that becomes a public document. We can recognize it. Clearly, the Board of Supervisors will know what is in the state budget for Fairfax County. We will, and we can make adjustments then. But because there, nothing has been settled, I think that it is dangerous to recognize any money from the state that simply has not been approved. There's much more work to be done. So I think that it is way too soon to recognize anything yet that is essentially not been passed. The Food and Nutrition Fund, it is self-supporting to self-supporting through the fees and the federal subsidy of that program. I am reluctant to put more pressure on that fund. It is down. We are trying to improve the quality of our food. Real Food for Kids is a parent organization that's worked very hard to improve Food and Nutrition Services. It is more expensive, and as we try to improve nutrition for our young people, I don't want to put more pressure on that fund right now. We also are going to need to know how many children are going to be serving next year, how many children are going to need subsidy in order to be fed. Therefore, I am also not willing at this time to basically put more pressure on that, on the Food and Nutrition Services. It is self-supporting, but at the moment, I am not willing to put more pressure on that. So while I appreciate the hard work and the thought, thank you. I will not support the amendment at this time. Thank you.
Ms. Evans, to be followed by Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. I also want to thank Mrs. Huff for her diligence in looking through the budget very quickly after getting on the board and trying to come up with some ideas for us. And I particularly appreciate the conversations that we've had about this. I think Ms. Huff has talked with most of us, and that's always wonderful to have those conversations and hear people's ideas. I'm not going to support this amendment primarily the same reasons that Mrs. Strauss has just outlined. The $3.2 million that we are hoping may materialize from the state government is not there yet. This is different from the other assumptions in our budget, which is, are based on past history and what we truly expect to get. This is still a proposal of the governor's. It's not in hand by any means, and I think it would take a, it's also a best-case scenario. I think it would take a great leap of faith to assume that the General Assembly will give the governor everything that he has asked for, first of all, and secondly, that this will materialize. So I think these chickens are far from hatching, and it would be problematic to put this assumption into our current budget. So I support keeping the budget as it is. But thank you.
Mr. Wilson, followed by Ms. Palczik.
Yes. I would like to say a few words just in support of the motion of Ms. Huff. Thank you for your hard work in preparing this motion and researching and sort of digging into the details on this line to help us all understand that line in the budget. And I would support this amendment. The truth is, is that this budget proposal is, in general, a leap of faith. It is a proposal that far exceeds the guidance of the county. We will be hoping on a much larger scale for our budget. So I think we should include it, and I will support her motion.
Ms. Palczik?
I too want to thank Ms. Huff. I know you have worked very diligently, and we have many, have had many conversations. I know, being new on the board, we have looked as quickly as we could through the budget to see, is there anything, is there anything we can, we can look at, we can cut? This, for the reasons that were explained before, number one, really cannot rely on a budget that likely will not be finalized until March or April, if we're lucky, and seeing how the General Assembly can make decisions at any point. We cannot rely on that and on something that we need right now for our class sizes. Also, Food and Nutrition Services, this is something I've been advocating for since sixth grade. A friend of mine went on Oprah from into elementary school to talk about our school lunches. And very much like the sleep community, realized that it took many years to get to a point where their advocacy came to fruition. I think that taking funds away from moving forward in something that's a priority, that really is. I grew up on free lunches, and many of our kids rely on that. So making sure that we are not taking money away from a fund that is critical to the health and well-being of our students. Finally, I think there's a difference between critical needs and priorities. I will recognize that teacher salary and class size are critical. That's where we're bleeding right now. I don't think that there are only priorities. So as we look at what's on our budget, yes, we are bleeding in our teachers who are leaving and in class sizes that are ballooning. But we do have many, many priorities, from the health and well-being of our students and our staff, to hopefully expanding pre-K one day. Many other things that we know are very effective. So I do very much appreciate the work you've put into this and the thoughtfulness, but I cannot support this motion.
Any other new comments before go-banks? Ms. McLaughlin?
I know that everyone's taken a great deal of effort to let Ms. Huff know how much we appreciate it. It's great to see a junior member of the board demonstrate her commitment to try and ensuring that we carefully examine a proposed budget and determine that whatever we send to the Board of Supervisors will be our best work. And so I look forward to our continued work on this budget effort. The thing that gives me pause about this amendment, in addition to what my colleagues have all stated, is that looking at where we've come in our Food and Nutritional Services, I am now in my 16th year, I think, as a Fairfax County parent, and I'm still hoping that maybe by my son's senior year, that Woodson High School might have a chance to see some of that yummy food that Marshall High School and Statesman Station has been delivering. So we have a ways to go with it, and the concerns I have is that where we draw money, and in this case with the amendment, to draw money out of the Food and Nutritional Services Fund for compensation for employees does then have an effect on the funding within that budget to what I hope is Fairfax County's amazing commitment to try in bringing more farm-to-table, fresh food to our schools. And so it's one of those important commitments that I think, for me, is why the amendment would bring concern to the impact it would have. So in terms of the state funding, you know, we right now, this proposed budget, we are talking about Part A, and we're going to then go into Part B after the Board of Supervisors decide on the transfer. And for Part A right now, it's important that we communicate to them, this is the budget, this is the amount of money we need. And every year, the Board of Supervisors absolutely watches very carefully, very diligently, what money, additional monies, comes to the county and/or to the schools from the state. And then they're going to do their subtractions and calculations before they make any decisions on what they will finally transfer over to all of us. So I am more comfortable sending over to a budget that demonstrates to the Board of Supervisors, here's what we've been told to date that is, you know, estimated to be given to Fairfax County schools. But the governor's proposal is not part of the estimates that the state does provide localities in saying, here's what you can anticipate. So I think that, again, Ms. Huff's intentions are absolutely in the right place, and when Part B comes around after the transfer in late April, we are going to need every single one of us on this board to follow the lead that Ms. Huff has shown us here tonight, which is that we're going to have to think very carefully about how we identify our most critical needs and how we're going to fund those. So thank you again, Ms. Huff. I hope it encourages you to continue this very important work that we do as board members, and I look forward to collaborating with you as we go forward here to May.
If there are no other, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McElveen. My mistake.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too would like to thank my colleague for bringing forward this amendment. But I have to say that I will do absolutely nothing to undermine the ask of this superintendent. And whether the intent is there or not, that is precisely what this amendment does. I am proud to say that I, along with many of my colleagues, stand with Dr. Garza and our employees on every last penny that is being asked for in this budget, particularly our employees who currently live under the living wage and work every day for that money. This is something we have wanted to do for a long time, and I want to applaud Dr. Garza for finally finding a way to work this into our budget. On the Food and Nutrition Services Fund, this board has worked too hard over the past several years to improve our Food and Nutrition Services programs so that we can support fresh and healthy food, only to have all of that work undermined by making this fund insolvent. So I cannot support this amendment.
Okay. Do have some go-banks, but I thought I would go ahead and speak first since I haven't. Thank you. Unless, okay. So I just, there's not much more I can add, except that I do, I don't think I've ever seen anyone who worked so hard in her first month on the board, and I really appreciate the effort here. As everyone has said, I think you're definitely thinking along the right lines here. But the way, I will not support this amendment, and the way I look at it is, you know, we get two swings at this budget, basically. And this first swing is really about deciding, is this a reasonable request? Does it fully fund our values as it is? Is it really what we feel like the school system needs? We will have another opportunity to discuss amendments and to vote on this budget in May after we know what the revenue side is. And I personally want to wait until then, until we know whether we have to make trade-offs and cuts before we begin to do that. I think specifically, I remember two years ago, we did not know until June, I think, what the state money was. So I just feel like that side of it is just much too inchoate at this point. We do build the budget on projections, but what's going to happen in the General Assembly doesn't even rise to the level of a projection, right? It's tea leaves. It's, we have no idea what's going to happen. It's political. So I don't like the idea of sending the message that we're already making cuts in this budget based on something that we have no idea whether it will happen or not. And also, you know, we have, over the last four years, worked hard to make some changes in Food and Nutrition Services in response to the community so that we have healthier food, and we know that that fund is actually in a little bit of trouble already. So again, making a trade-off between that really important value and the very important value of our most low-paid employees, bringing them up to a living wage, is just not a trade-off that I want to make right now. If at some point down the road, we have to do that, that's one thing. I feel like this budget doesn't require us to make trade-offs because it does reflect all of our values. It reflects our value for appropriately paying our employees. It reflects our value for lowering class sizes, and it reflects our value of taking care of our lowest-paid employees and also doing what we need to do in Food and Nutrition Services. So although I really do appreciate the amendment here and the opportunity to talk about all of this, which has been very, very helpful, I will not support this amendment. I have, Ms. Darrenat Kofax, did you have a chance to speak yet?
I didn't, and I, but I appreciate that. Ms. Huff, just as everybody has been singing your praises, you and I have talked several times, and I think it's worthy to note that publicly, I do want to tell you that I appreciate your hard work and your diligence, and I know where it's coming from and your choices that you're making, and I do appreciate that. I do want to say, I don't think I can add to much of what my colleagues have said who are not supporting, and I will not be supporting it at this time. And I think, just following up behind Ms. Hines's comments, I think there may be a time to look at other things, as Ms. Hines said, the second half of our budget process as we move forward. And I'll appreciate your eye and your looking toward that because I know your diligence from this first go-around at this time. Again, you know, we talk about this budget and supporting it, and I guess I just feel even so strongly about the fact that, at this point, I see this as a basic budget, and there are so many innovative things that we talk about and want to share and want to be able to celebrate moving forward, and we haven't been able to do that. So at this point, I certainly don't want to make cuts. I want to keep it intact as it is and hope that we can continue this when we see investment from our partners in the county and the state.
Okay. Before go-banks, I have another new speaker. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I didn't want to let the evening go by without personally thanking you, Ms. Huff, because your spirit of cooperation and spirit of wanting to find a way to, to reflect that there were, there were opportunities to find more efficiencies. And I think going forward, there may be, but this budget is actually, I think, we got a little confused in the conversation, and I think in this amendment, from the standpoint of a budget reflects what are the needs we have to actually accomplish the work that we are charged with. And we are charged with providing a world- And we are charged with providing a world-class education to all of our students. The budget actually reflects a funding source. And so... Or the... And I would caution that we are first stepping out with what are the budget requirements to continue to provide the services to our students, to ensure that each and every child is able to achieve their goals. And as far as funding, we can address any sort of trade-offs that we may have to make if we come short on funding. And so, at this point, I... As much as I would love to be able to support you in your amendment, I can't. But I do look forward to many years of positively working together.
Go-backs, Ms. Huff, Mrs. Schultz, and Mr. Wilson. Ms. Huff?
Thank you. And I thank you all for your encouragement. I appreciate that. And I have really enjoyed already beginning these conversations. And I do want to clarify that this is no attempt to undermine what we are doing here. I have sat down with every school board member. I've sat down with many Board of Supervisors already. And I think that that's what we need to do. We need to begin having conversations and figuring out what is going to make us, in a position stronger, to get the funds that we need to bring the most excellence to our students and our schools. And that's what this amendment is about. I appreciate the concerns over the uncertainty of the $3.2 million, but the whole budget process is based on assumptions that may not come to fruition. To put it in perspective, I went back and looked at the past couple of years for projected versus actuals from the state revenue line item. So, FY '15 proposed budget, we had a line item state revenue total of $655.5 million. The actual ended up being $686.6 million, which was a $31 million difference. FY '16 proposed budget was $684.6 million proposed, actual was $692.6 million received from the state, which was an $8 million difference. So, I do think that when we look at what this $3.2 million is, it's just another assumption that we're basing our budget on. I also want to mention that the reason the $3.2 million that was originally mentioned Monday night was that it wasn't an appreciable difference to the ask, and that's why we didn't recognize it. And I know that that's on the face, it is true, but I think it's important that we're as accurate as possible in presenting the budget to the Board of Supervisors. And as far as the Food and Nutrition Services, I'm not advocating for taking funds away. I think better food is absolutely something we should be working towards. And maybe we need to clarify, based on the budget response answer, that I don't believe it's going to take $1.1 million to get the living wage, because the $1.1 million was assuming no step and no MSA. But we are already budgeting for a step and 1%. So, the $1.1 million figure, I don't know if that's appropriate to ask, but...
That's, I think, kind of to the point, that some of these numbers will change a little bit depending upon, for an example, if the class size money, if we have that for class size, then we may get the $3 million, right? If we don't fund... Are unable to fund that, we will not get that. So, there's going to be a lot of moving parts as we move ahead. And in fact, there will be some fluctuations in sales tax revenue that we will be acknowledging as we move forward. And some of the fluctuation on an annual basis to state revenue is sales tax revenue. And we show that in budget. I've shown, recognized an increase in sales tax in this budget. And, you know, we'll be monitoring that in the coming months. It could likely be less, to your point, if the other components of the budget remain in.
So... Thank you. I... But we have counted in our budget, in our ask, for one step and 1%, which would mean we wouldn't need $1.1 million. So, either way...
Do you have that number in front of you, Susan? How much would it be if you subtract the market...
I believe it's going to be close to $800,000. But we have to remember that we have to have sufficient funding in order to do all the salary increases. So, the way it's presented in the proposed budget is it's independent of that salary increase, because if we don't do the salary increase and decide to approve the living wage, it will cost the $1.1 million. So, as Dr. Garza mentioned, as we go through this process, if the salary increases do get approved at the approved stage, then the cost of the living wage will come down slightly. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Schultz, followed by Mr. Wilson.
So, I've heard a phrase, which I thought was very nice, and I'm sorry, I don't know who to attribute it to. I think it might be Ms. Evans on "Follow the Lead," or maybe it was Ms. Corbett Sanders. I forget. I forget who. But whoever said it, I'd like to attribute it to you, on "Following the Lead in the Future." I think you said it, Ms. Evans, about Ms. Huff. And the problem is, is that if we don't do things like have an honest conversation here at the table about the fact that this isn't about cutting Food and Nutrition Services, and it isn't about providing the living wage, the Food and Nutrition Services budget provided to us is balanced. So, all we're doing is recognizing what is resident within the Food and Nutrition Services. And the historical data shows, and that's the kind of conversation I'd prefer that we have, rather than we, as a board, have an ethos about not making value judgments. And words like "undermine" certainly attribute a sense of values to somebody else's hard labor leading up to tonight. And I think it's not appropriate to attribute the work of the board that is supposed to be data-driven and transparent on value judgments and feelings. The money is in the Food and Nutrition Services budget to do what we said we were going to do, which is provide the living wage adjustment. And whether we ultimately get a certain amount from the Board of Supervisors or not, the front end of doing the work of this board requires, I think, a reconciliation of that before it goes over. And the state transfer on the small percentage, and it really is a very small percentage of the overall $2.68 billion budget, operating budget, in terms of what we get from the state, is historically proves that we are going to get a transfer from the state that is adequate to meet the budget that's been presented. So, I have difficulty reconciling that the $3.2 million was not addressed with Board of Supervisors, because it was quote-unquote "not appreciable difference to the ask." But then, we're trying to make this adjustment to ensure clarity in our documents and our asks to the Board of Supervisors, so that the rhetoric that goes along with this doesn't get picked up in the community by random public officials, but becomes a talk about the clarity of our ask and that there's no gray area. And I think this is an incredibly infinitesimal change that adds a degree of clarity that makes this a pinpoint, laser, easy thing to do. And if we can't compromise on something that we know already takes care of, the priority that we've established for Food and Nutrition Services, and I too am very interested in ensuring quality food mixes to all of our schools. In fact, I've talked about having schools reopen their kitchens instead of serving frozen food. I look forward to that discussion. That doesn't mean we don't reconcile what exists within one side of the budget in Food and Nutrition Services. So, it's a small reconciliation that we know is going to be met by the state budget in any event. And I think that lacking this clarity, things are going to get a lot muddier from this point forward.
Okay. So, I think at this point, we will vote on the motion to amend. And once again, the motion reads, "To amend the main motion by reducing the county transfer request by a total of $4.3 million, by increasing state revenue by $3.2 million based on the governor's introduced budget, reducing the living wage expenditure by $1.1 million, increasing expenditures in the Food and Nutrition Services fund by $1.1 million to fund the living wage, and directing the superintendent to determine the steps that Food and Nutrition Services should take to balance the budget of this self-supporting fund." All those in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Huff, Mr. Wilson, and Ms. Schultz. All those opposed? Darnak Kofax, McElvein, Strauss, Corbett Sanders, Evans, Heinz, Moon, McLaughlin, and Palczik. The motion fails. So, we are back to the main motion, which is to adopt the FY 2017 advertised budget as detailed in the superintendent's proposed budget and as reflected in the agenda item attachment. So far, Ms. Strauss and Ms. Darnak Kofax have spoken to that motion. Do I have anyone else who would like to speak to it? Ms. Evans?
Yes. I think Mrs. Strauss and Mrs. Darnak Kofax spoke very well to this, and I do want to thank both of them for taking on this task of... It's quite a lot of work, we know. And thank you for all your diligence in working on the budget with the superintendent and with board members. I support this budget. I support it wholeheartedly. I believe that Dr. Garza has taken the right approach to this budget. We have made it clear that we do not want any more cuts. We have endured so many in the past eight years. My first year on the board, which is only six years ago, we were cut back by 1% at a time when we were experiencing tremendous growth in student population, an increasing number of needs, higher numbers and percentages of needy students. And we continue to suffer from that to this day. We have had several years where we have been either flat or cut back, and it is time to get back on track. It's time to start rebuilding, reinvesting, as Dr. Garza has said. And I support the priorities in this budget, increasing teacher compensation, compensation for all of our employees, but particularly our teachers that have lost ground with our surrounding jurisdictions. I particularly worry about our hard-to-staff schools. We must bring our teacher salaries, in particular, up to where they need to be. It's important that we are bringing our lowest-paid employees up to the living wage. This is something that we have been trying to do. We have gradually been decreasing the number of employees who are below the living wage, and I'm glad that we are looking now at bringing everyone up to the living wage. In future years, I hope we can work on bringing our crucially important parent liaisons into being full-fledged staffers with benefits. We haven't found the right formula for that yet, but I will continue to work on that, because I do think that that's another area that we need to address. This is a modest request in the end. It is not an exorbitant request. It is modest, particularly when you think about what we have endured for the last eight years. I do understand that the Board of Supervisors has a lot of pressure, a lot of competing interests. I understand that we have all endured a recession that required some very difficult decisions, but we are now coming out of it, and now is the time to start rebuilding. So, I do support this approach, and it is time, I believe, to stop the cutting and to go back to rebuilding.
Ms. McLaughlin, to be followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
I want to say to Dr. Garza that I very much appreciate your vision in looking at this budget as, how can we finally help the county understand the needs of the school system? And without question, I firmly believe that we need to do no less than what the Board of Supervisors and the county executive have forecasted in showing their commitment to their employees in terms of an annual compensation increase. And that is the biggest driver in this budget request, and it's appropriate. The second thing is, the county executive gave no instruction, no direction to the county side, nor to us, to find any cuts. He just simply said, you know, this is what we're forecasting that we're going to need to have the maintenance of effort in their budget. And we've done the same. When you look at the fact that the county will be covering its increases in healthcare costs and its retirement costs, we're going to be doing the same. When you look at a community that has been loud and clear to the school board, the large class sizes around the county have become untenable. Our teachers, our students are paying the price. And the quality of an education in Fairfax County is going to be compromised. We can't stand by that anymore. And so, your budget is showing the commitment that are the most important things, the mission critical, the high-impact expenses that we need. In terms of the next biggest portion of the budget, which, again, you're being bold, and that's what we need from our superintendent. Are we behind in employee compensation compared to the region? We are. Do we need to start closing that gap? We absolutely must. And so, the additional funds, the $40 million you've put in that budget, this is for our board to say, do you believe that it is time for Fairfax County to close the gap? And this is to get us there. Many of my colleagues know in our work sessions, I don't have all of the information yet that helps provide the additional context of where the money will get us. But we know that it's not getting us to 100%. So, we're going to be able to have more information about how close this gets us. But we know right now, as of February 4th, we have to make a decision, and we have to make a commitment. And that's what tonight is, it's making a commitment. I also want to share with my colleagues that you know from the past, there are times when I have suggested other ways that we direct funding. And I'm not even going to mention some of the things in the past, because you all know them, that I've thought, could we direct funds this way or that way? But that's not what the time is right now. Right now is, we're coming forward and saying that we believe this is what our school system needs. And it is for the supervisors to hear as loud and clear as possible from all county residents, not just the 25% to 30% who have children in our schools. We need every resident in Fairfax County to come forward and say, we believe in strong public schools. We believe that this budget is about fairness and equity for school employees, as well as having strong services throughout the county. And so, to Mr. McElvein's concern, I do understand your perspective that any change might indicate that we're not standing behind Dr. Garza. I would just ask for all 12 of us to be extremely mindful that, in May, after we see what the state brings to us, after we see what the Board of Supervisors transfers over to us, and I am very hopeful that they are going to respect the needs of the budget we've put before them, that all 12 of us have got to work in partnership with Dr. Garza to make sure that we really do direct our funds to the most important things that matter to our students and our teachers and the instruction in the classroom. And I think that takes a dialogue of all 12 of us. And so, I look forward to all of us being as committed as Ms. Huff showed earlier this evening, which is, we respect our superintendent and her amazing leadership team, but you have 12 other people here who are partners with you. And hopefully, what you find is that our 12 minds bring additional thinking to the table and ways to look at how we can make sure that what this final FY '17 budget looks like is the best work we could bring to it. And so, we talk about project-based learning, and I'm going to tell my colleagues, nothing could demonstrate that better to our community than, you better look at the FY '17 budget come transfer time, as it's now our project to work on together. So, I'm very proud to support tonight's budget. And I do think that it's going to be essential for the community voice to come forward and let the supervisors know that it is time to make sure that we are fair and equitable to our schools, just as we are to every other service in this county.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you. And I too would like to thank...
And I too would like to thank the superintendent, as well as our chair and co-chair of the Budget Committee. You have done the yeoman's work in putting together a budget that I can support. I can support it because I would always drawl upon my experiences in Fairfax County schools and having been well-prepared, and one of the things that I was well-prepared in was in history. And so I would like us to kind of focus a bit on the history of public education here in the state of Virginia. So if you don't mind, I'd like to give you a quote, actually two quotes, from Thomas In 1814, Thomas Jefferson said, "It is highly interesting to our country, and it is the duty of its functionaries to provide that every citizen in it should receive an education proportioned to the condition and pursuits of his life." And in 1818, Thomas Jefferson again spoke to the importance of public education in our society, and he said, "A system of general instruction which shall reach every description of our citizens, from the richest to the poorest, as it was the earliest, so it will be the latest of all public concerns, in which I shall permit myself to take an interest." And that is something that should guide our work every day on this board, and I think it does because there are 12 people here who are earnest about supporting a world-class education for our students. The budget which has been recommended by the superintendent reflects the values of our community and the need to maintain those programs that ensure every child is able to reach their potential in our public education schools. After years of cutting staff, increasing class sizes, and delaying investments in competitive salaries to offset the rapid increases in cost in our health insurance and shifting pension obligations, it is time to reinvest in our schools. And I appreciate the efforts that the previous Board of Supervisors has made in trying to pick up the shortfall in funding that has been created by shortfalls at the state and federal government level, as they face the most difficult economic downturn our country has faced since the '30s. However, we are now at a point where insufficient funding will impact the education that our children receive and will put us at a competitive disadvantage in light of what the other jurisdictions in northern Virginia are talking about doing with their budgets. And so I urge all of my colleagues on this board to support this budget, which supports the values that Fairfax citizens have, and those are that we value our children's education and want to ensure that they are taught by world-class educators that receive competitive salaries and benefits. Similarly, we value the staffs that support them in their efforts and that they should receive a living wage. We value a comprehensive education that addresses the intellectual, physical, and emotional needs of all of our students, and thus, we value the programs that are not being cut in this budget, but value the fact that our students will have smaller classes in the future. And we value the importance of providing a safe and secure learning environment, which includes investment in our transportation infrastructure. So I urge you to support this budget. I will be doing so.
So I have been struggling with how I would vote on this budget since it was proposed. I do feel a strong obligation to represent the whole county and those that put me in this seat. Throughout my campaign, I talked passionately about fighting for competitive teacher salaries, reducing class sizes, and making sure we were being the best stewards with the dollars we are entrusted. The better stewardship we show, the more our students benefit from the limited dollars going directly to their classrooms. I'm concerned that the budget doesn't identify savings or areas where we identify to put our own dollars towards what we say is a top priority, not the only priority. Being a new board member, I realize I've walked into this dialogue and now have to decide how to vote. I feel the dialogue has been set so that if I say yes, I am saying yes, this is a bare-bones budget and we don't receive, and we don't see any cent, the school system, I'm sorry. It's a bare-bones budget, and if we don't receive every cent, the school system will fall apart. By saying yes, I'd be saying that there is not $1 of savings we could find this year to put towards the priority of paying teachers competitive salary and reducing class sizes in our most crowded classes in schools. On the other hand, the conversation has been set that if I say no, I'm saying no to increasing teacher salary and reducing class size. That is not true either. In wanting to support Dr. Garza's budget, I put forward the motion to recognize some dollars in savings from our budget as a compromise going forward to the Board of Supervisors. If we're going to be serious about putting our dollars towards the top priority of competitive teacher salary and reducing class sizes, I believe we need to account for as many dollars as we can, as we ask for taxpayers to contribute more toward what we say is the top priority of our schools and our students. Although I am in full support of Dr. Garza placing emphasis on this priority, I cannot support this budget when we have not been able to find dollars within our own budget to support that same priority. As we go forward and we focus on compensation and a plan to get our teachers' salaries competitive and bring our class sizes to appropriate levels for all students, I look forward to working with my colleagues. I'm excited to converse with them about, and the public, about ideas I have, such as an audit of our budget with our new auditor general. So my no tonight is a no because we could not find a dollar to contribute to what we say is the number-one priority, even with a nominal amendment. At the same time, my no is a yes to continue working together to make sure we fight toward our top priorities for our schools and our children while being good stewards of all of our community.
Mr. McElveen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I would like for all of us to take a moment tonight to imagine what great things we could do if we just stopped cutting. Ever since I've been on this board, we've been cutting year after year, and at the end of the budget process, we're left with pennies, and we're also left cutting things in order to fund other things, just to be innovative. We have to cut things in order to add other things. The problem in this community is that our leaders have stopped thinking about what we could be as a school system. Instead, each year, we only think about what we can do to get by. Well, I'm tired of doing what we can do to get by, Dr. Garza. I'm tired of our leaders who only think about what our school system is today instead of joining with us to imagine what it could be. We're going to have a tough few months ahead, as we all know, but in the midst of all the deficit thinking, let's not stop imagining what we could be. Despite the idea that has been floated by an elected official that this is hyperbole, let's think about that for a minute. It is not hyperbole to say that we have employees working and living under the living wage. It's not hyperbole to say that our teachers earn tens of thousands of dollars less than their peers in surrounding counties. It's not hyperbole to say that 30 students in a classroom is too many. The only hyperbole that I hear is elected officials speaking and not being realistic about the straits this school system is in. So I hope that all of us, everyone in this room, everyone at other daisies, at the county and the state level, take a hard look at our budget and tell us to our face that it is hyperbole, because we, my friends, have a different message for them.
Okay, I guess it's my turn. So as someone who has been on the board not a long time, but for four years, I can say, just looking back over the last four years, we have made cuts. We have taken our responsibility very seriously to be effective and efficient, and so I disagree with the suggestion that we haven't tried hard enough to find cuts. Not only have we made cuts, in my opinion, we have made too many cuts. We have cut too much. And when I look at this budget, there are things that are not in here that should be, and I think Mr. McElveen touched on it. There's nothing for pre-K in here. There's nothing for innovation in here, you know? We're not, this is not a budget that is, that even brings us to, I think, where we ought to be. But in my four years, I have to say, this is the best budget that I have the privilege of voting for. A budget is fundamentally a statement of values, and this budget reflects this community's unwavering support for excellent public schools. It includes critical pay increases for our teachers. It begins to address class sizes, and most importantly proposes no cuts to the great programs that we here in this community expect from our schools. That's the good news. We have a budget tonight that is hopeful and worthy of this community. The bad news, or the potentially bad news, is that we have no guarantee that it will be fully funded. Because Virginia law does not allow school boards to raise revenue directly, we must advocate for this budget with our state and county funders. And a lot of people in the room here already know that because you've been with us for years doing this, but a lot of people in the community don't necessarily. And after years of revenues not meeting needs, this school system is now spending $1,000 less per student in real dollars than in 2009. Those are real cuts. Our teacher pay scale has lost so much ground in the region that mid-career teachers can now earn $15,000 more per year right next door in Arlington. We began this school year, as someone else has said, with an historic 200 vacant classroom teacher positions. The school board has been forced to raise class size three times in the last 10 years, and central office staff is so lean that school-based educators are not receiving the timely support that they need. We hear that over and over. Clearly, it is time to stop cutting and start reinvesting, and this budget does that. Dr. Garza's Budget Advisory Committee spent many hours over several weeks last summer and fall developing a list of potential program cuts and new fees. Those cuts and fees are not in this budget because they would fundamentally change the quality and character of Fairfax County public schools. I did not leave the classroom to serve on this board so that I could oversee the dismantling of this world-class school system, but that nasty basket of cuts is where this board will have to turn if funding does not match our needs yet again this year. The Virginia General Assembly is in session now, considering a proposal from Governor McAuliffe that would make some new investments in state K-12 funding, and we've talked about that a little bit tonight. But even if the governor's proposal survives, very little unfortunately of that new funding would make its way to Fairfax County public schools. And while most of our Fairfax County delegation in Richmond fights hard for our schools, the sad truth is, Virginia has been underfunding K-12 education for a decade. Virginia now ranks eighth nationally in household income and 38th nationally in spending on public schools. That's 38 out of 50 states. That is not only shameful, it is grossly unfair to local taxpayers, meaning homeowners for the most part, who increasingly wants to make up the difference. The Fairfax County Board of Supervisors provides roughly 70% of FCPS operating budget in the form of an annual transfer. Since 2009, the county transfer has not kept pace with needs. The recession of 2008, 2009, followed by sequestration and a sluggish housing recovery, all a story that we've heard over and over again, have made it difficult to keep up with the growing enrollment and fixed costs of this school system. But continued underinvestment in Fairfax County public schools is itself dangerous to the delicate economic recovery of our local economy. Reinvesting in excellent schools is in fact an essential part of that recovery. We know that this excellent school system is a big driver in the health of our economy. Beyond FY 2017, we must begin to fix the structural challenges to school funding. We know that. We must diversify our revenue base, beginning, I believe, with a county meals tax, and work with our partners around the Commonwealth to develop a more robust response to the General Assembly's intransigence. But for the next weeks and months, our focus is on this budget, the FY 2017 budget, this proposed budget tonight, and the requested transfer from the Board of Supervisors. That transfer request is for an additional 6.7% above last year's transfer. Historically, going back before the recent recessionary years, the transfer increase from the county has often been higher than that. It's often been double digits. Given the underinvestment of the past eight years and the resultant budget challenges facing FCPS, an increase in the transfer of this size is not unreasonable. It's perfectly reasonable. It's necessary. It's critical that community members make their voices heard, and I'm so grateful to the many, many people, some of whom are here tonight, who have been weighing in with emails, public testimony, and attendance at rallies, attendance here at our public hearing. The outpouring of community support for the schools this year is something I have never seen in my 25 years in Fairfax County, and I'm so grateful for it. I believe it's already making a difference. It's making a difference in our conversations. I want to thank especially the grassroots organizers of IMFCPS, a homegrown right in Hunter Mill District, my district. I appreciate all the work that they're doing. The FCPS website has good information for anyone else who would like to advocate on behalf of this budget. Just a couple of dates coming up. On February 16th, the county executive will present his proposed budget to the Board of Supervisors. That's an important date to know. And also, on March 1st, the Board of Supervisors will set their advertised tax rate, at which time they can, and I believe should, give themselves the flexibility to fully fund all the critical needs of the county, including Fairfax County Public Schools budget. So I will support this budget. Are there any other comments? All right, seeing none.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. Like Ms. Huff, this process of joining the board and then immersing myself into the details of the budget has been quite challenging and also a very informative process, and I'd like to thank everybody involved in creating the budget, especially Dr. Garza for her hard work in putting this together. I've had many conversations with her since even before joining the board about the budget and priorities, and I echo what Ms. Huff said about the priorities of taking care of teachers and making sure money stays in the classrooms. That's critical. We, I think that Ms. Corbett Sanders said it very well when she said, "There are 12 people here who care greatly about maintaining the quality of Fairfax County public schools." We may approach it somewhat differently, but we all really sincerely care and will continue to work very hard along those lines. I also would like to thank Ms. McLaughlin for pointing out that I'm going to get an education in project-based learning because as Part A concludes and we move to Part B, which is post-transfer, we all going to share in that learning experience, so I look forward to that. I just wanted to make a few remarks. First, I think it's important to keep in mind that the guidance that the Board of Supervisors gave us last year was 3%, and that that is what we should expect to receive. The average increase in more recent years, I'd say the last decade, I think is about 2.5%. So if we vote yes to this budget, we're asking for an amount that is more than twice of what the Board of Supervisors told us to plan for, nearly three times the recent historic average. And it doesn't mean that the ask is too high. It just means that's the reality, and I think we need to be, we need to be realistic as we move forward with what our expectations are and knowing that we have a lot of hard work ahead. So in essence, it seems that we're planning for, to send a budget to the Board of Supervisors that will be rejected, and we're going to require all of us to go back to the drawing board and revisit all of the issues and all of our priorities, and that's going to be a challenge and one that I hope we will all commit to and doing in a very respectful way. Last year, the school board and Fairfax County public schools began a process of requesting the comments of the community and set up a task force, which in many ways pitted program against program, schools against schools, program against program, in a way that I think maybe led to many, many passionate pleas from across the county, from concerned residents and parents who wanted to say programs are very important to them, whether it was gifted education, foreign language, special education, arts and music, sports, and so on, and so on. Let's also, I think that we need to, as a school board, get into discussing what our priorities are and what the core essential services that we are going to provide to this community, and it's going to be a difficult, a difficult process ahead of us. But we need to keep in mind that as the Fairfax County public schools budget continues to rise, it's paid by our tax dollars. Household incomes in Fairfax County have been flat since 2008, and in fact, they dropped in 2014, according to the Census Bureau. At the same time, real estate values of homes- At the same time, real estate values of homes, which had historically risen at a great rate every decade, in the last decade grew very marginally, and in many people's homes lost value. And so this flat rise in home values, or lack of rise in home values, was simultaneously accompanied by increases in real estate taxes, which grew since 2008 by approximately 15% to 16%. So we need to take our job very seriously, and we need to be the very best stewards we can of our funds. We do need to hear from the Auditor General regarding our finances. We need to hear from the Auditor General regularly to help us in this process. There are many, many great teachers, great schools, great programs in Fairfax County Public Schools. They need us to be more creative, more willing to think of new alternatives to current practices of doing things. We need to be more ambitious about getting as much money into the school buildings and to support the great teachers and wonderful learning environments that make for a world-class education for all of our students. When we waste money, we're taking it out of the hands of the heroes of our community, our teachers, and the future of our community, our students. For all of these reasons, I will respectfully vote no for the proposed school budget.
Ms. Palchik, to be followed by Mr. Moon.
For me, the theme of the past few years has been, "You don't know what you have till it's gone." It's still hard for me to be, find my voice, to advocate. What I have learned over the last few years, however, in my professional life, is that while I may not self-advocate, I will advocate for others, and I will advocate for the students and for our county. I grew up here in Fairfax, and as many of us at this table took advantage and thrived in our amazing system. I, you know, left the state of Virginia for several years to go and explore and explore the world and other parts of the country, and I remember being shocked, completely shocked, that other states did not fund or value education the way Virginia did, the way our county has, and what a difference it made from seeing the opportunities, you know, or the effects it had on families and on young children, to seeing the effects it has on the economy, property values, the whole lot. So, and this is very hard to do, but I know it's important, and that is why I'm here. That's why I've been elected. Part of our job is to advocate. As Ms. Hines said, the way we are set up in our system means that we must act as advocates for our schools. It's in our governance. We must advocate to the local, state, and federal levels. I would love, love for our state and federal governments to right now, today, tomorrow, reinvest in our schools. Unfortunately, I won't be holding my breath, and it is, that is a long-term, that is a long-term project and advocacy work that we need to do and follow in the immediate future, in the immediate budget. We have to continue to rely on our county. This is a place where those of us who do not yet have kids, who may not have kids, still understand that this is why people move here, this is why people open businesses here, and this is why we are a county where so many of our children are able to thrive regardless of their socioeconomic background. And that is the number-one reason why I feel that Fairfax County is one of the richest places in the world. I, for one, cannot say that we will only fund our critical needs. We have so many unfunded priorities. They have been mentioned, from expanding pre-K to ensuring all of our community is safe, to bringing us forward with the latest technology, digital learning, you know, world-class education that looks at cognitive skills, project-based learning. All of these things unfortunately do take money, as well as will and desire. And I, for one, hope that we and others in our county and in our state and in our federal government will have the political will to stand up for that.
Okay.
It's interesting by happenstance to go, you know, at different times, to speak at different times, because sometimes we go first, and sometimes we're going in the middle, and sometimes we go at the end, to listen to what all of our colleagues say. And it's interesting because on the drive here, I still didn't know if I was voting for this budget tonight. And it is helpful to hear where our colleagues are, what some of the arguments for and against are, the inclinations. And I get back to the pragmatic, data-driven decisions that are before this board in running a school system with 39,000 full and part-time. Is that right, roughly? Okay, I'm going to throw the dart. 39,000, 40,000 full and part-time employees, 186,000 children, 196 schools, largest school bus fleet in the nation. And something that Chairman Hines said, the stats on the funding, very interesting, because if we're eighth in the nation as a state Commonwealth in income and 38th in ed funding, I wonder what those numbers look like if you just take Fairfax County? Because I think the eight number probably goes up, but I think the 38th in ed funding probably goes down exponentially because of the LCI and the Local Composite Index. And that's really where we have a big problem here. And maybe Mr. Wilson was eloquent in identifying some of the economic realities, because I think we keep talking about like whose is whose reality, the school board's reality, the Board of Supervisors' reality, the taxpayer's reality, and somewhere in there is the nexus of truth. Yes, we started the year with 200 teacher positions open, and that's, that's a painful reality, and we have heard that teachers are going elsewhere for starting salaries. But we also started the school year with 2,115 fewer students, and that's reality, too. And there has got to be a bit of a balance beam, seesaw of all the truths that are here. And I really do appreciate all the people who came out to the public hearing on the budget, but what saddened me was how narrow the scope of the interests were, that were represented. Because we basically heard from strings parents and business owners and foreign language immersion protection. And if you look at the number of students in fourth-grade strings out of the whole county, or the number of students who are in language immersion, those are tiny, tiny little fractions. I was shocked that one person spoke regarding athletics. And that, I don't want the takeaway to be that there, that somebody, you know, it's the NIMBY, not in my backyard. I want strings, and that's what I'm going to advocate for, and I'm not going to point to anything else in the budget, just as long as I get what I want. And this is coming from a parent whose children have participated, as I look in the composite, and I'm a long from being finished with FCPS, who have participated in the fine arts, in music programs, in theater programs, in athletics, in FBLA, and DECA competitions. So I don't have students that fit one mold. My students have benefited from little segments across. And I look to parents like Dana Hubchin, who has been an amazing parent at Union Mill Elementary, or Mikel Emery, who's the PTSA president at Robinson, or Lisa Grania, or April Doherty, who are the senior parents at Robinson. And I look at what they have to go through to get extra funding from parents for everything. And if you're a parent currently in the school system, you know that at every turn, there is an ask for a field trip, a theater participation, a, you know, something. And so more and more and more of the things that had been provided by parents, or by the school system, are now shifted into asks of parents. And what Mr. Wilson spoke about is that strangulation of the individual homeowner, the individual parent, in supporting the school system because they're picking up the bill already. And so, you know, there are multiple realities, not one reality here. And I'm worried that when we got early signaling from Terry McAuliffe, there was a lot of celebration that Terry McAuliffe was going to bring all this extra education funding to Fairfax, and it was as if we were on a wing and a prayer, hoping that that was going to come true, and that did not come true. We are in a position that if the ed funding doesn't come from Richmond to here and that doesn't fix, we are perpetually in a position where we have to solve our own problems. And I don't know how the LCI gets fixed, but when Richmond is coming up with bills about giving women a tax break on tampons instead of fixing the LCI, we have got something seriously screwed up. So I'm saying to my legislators in Richmond, "Stop with the nonsensical bills and the wasting of my taxpayer money that's paying their salary. Your taxpayer money's paying mine, but mine's paying theirs." And that infuriates me that we can't do things like fix an antiquated education funding system. But it also infuriates me when we have something as simple as the motion that we had just before this, because then we become a part of the problem. We're not willing, we're just as entrenched, and we're not willing to move one period, one comma, one anything in order to demonstrate a collaborative nature to our colleagues over in the Government Center. So that puts us in a pinch. I'm mad at the supervisors. I'm mad at Virginia General Assembly. People are mad with us. Everybody's mad at each other, but nobody's looking at solutions. And Ms. Huff had a very reasonable identification in a budget that was so crystal clear that it wasn't going to affect anything, so much so that it was described just last week as to be negligible enough to not even impact the ask. And if we can't fix that ourselves, then pointing our fingers at Richmond gets us in just as much trouble. So, you know, last year, I proposed changes to the budget. Pre-K was brought up at this table, even though it were K-12 system. I proposed amendments that would have added four-year-old identification, additional classrooms for pre-K. And we didn't make it a priority then, so we didn't save money by providing pre-K services to some four-year-olds that we could have then saved money on with them being, having access to educational services before they entered kindergarten. We have to be smart about how we spend the money that we have, and I don't know that we're always doing that. And it's a tough ask because we were given direction a year ago, and this isn't about one part of our education system over another, but I don't know that I'm there.
McAuliffe, Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't quite expect tonight's discussion on this budget would go this long. I thought this was rather non-controversial proposal from Superintendent after so many years of budget cuts, that we are, I thought we are all on the same page, that it is the time to restore and reinvest. And that's what the Superintendent's proposed budget calls for. I did not make any comment when one of the newer colleagues on the board proposed the amendment earlier today, and I'm still hoping, I heard what the maker of the motion said about this budget where she stood, but I'm still hoping that we can send a stronger message to the AA Community and County Board of Supervisors that school board is solidly behind our Superintendent's request to really make the right investment and bring the quality of a school system back up to where it should be. If $4.3 million, which is based upon my little arithmetic, 0.16% of our budget, proposed budget of $2.7 billion, if 0.16% makes a difference between supporting a budget and not supporting a budget, I have to honestly disagree that that's large enough. If you truly believe that we should support our employees and teachers and reduce the class size, 0.16% should not be the reason to vote no on this proposal. Another colleague of mine talked about guidance from County Board of Supervisors. Yes, over the years, we have had all these guidances from County Board of Supervisors, and they have been very unreasonable. And especially this time, 3%. With all those cuts we have to make, with a 3%, we have, we got to make further cuts. And I am simply not able to accept that as a guidance to accept. And it's not just a Fairfax County public school system, but all those criticisms around us are all trying to restore and reinvest, starting from next year. Alexandria City, our budget, our Superintendent's proposed budget on the table, is asking 4.8% increase of last year's approved budget. Alexandria City is asking for 6.9% increase. Forest Church City is 5.0%. Loudoun County, 8.8%. Montgomery County, 5.8%. Prince George's County, 12%. 4.8% is the lowest among these school districts because we are trying to be prudent in our budget approach. I am supporting this motion, this proposal, and I am not going to start the budget deliberate discussion with the County Board of Supervisors and co. and county, uh, community members with the assumption that our request is going to be rejected. I am not going to take that approach.
Mr. Press.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When I took this board seat, student representative position, in July, I came to this board and I shared with you that the fundamental promise that I made to the students who put me here and to the 188,000 students that I represent is that I would work with this board and this Superintendent to build a budget that protected student programming and empowered student achievement. This budget is not the one that I dreamed of. The budget that I dreamed of included growth for things like pre-K, for increased investment beyond what we're including in this budget, for teacher compensation, for compensation increases beyond moving to the living wage for food service workers and custodians. The fact that we're talking about just getting to the living wage for these people who work day in and day out harder than anybody could imagine to serve our students, I think, is representative of the situation that we're in. But this budget is the one that I've come to accept. As I stated earlier, this is one I followed from the very beginning to where it is now. the very beginning to where it is now. And I'm, I can say with, with full confidence that I'm not happy with where it is. There are so many more things that I would have liked to have included in this. What I will say is this is the only budget that I think I, as a student leader in good faith, could support. This is the only budget that could have been proposed, in my opinion, given the circumstances that we're in, that meets the minimum needs that we have identified. This budget, in my opinion, does the bare minimum to protect student programming, just protect, not necessarily enhance, just protect, and to not necessarily empower student achievement, but to keep it where it is. The fact is that Fairfax County was on a trend, and has been nationally, of increasing its performance and reasserting itself as a national leader in education for years. And the fact is, we should remain committed to that goal, and we shouldn't lose sight of that. And in this, and despite the budget reality that we are in, our teachers continue to do amazing things day in and day out. They stay in our system, knowing full well that they could go next door and $115,000 more. They come in each day to work with students because that's what they love to do. And that is extremely powerful. Those teachers deserve more than we can give them in this budget. And I urge board members, long after I'm gone, and after Student Representative, after Student Representative fills this chair, to continue that commitment to increasing teacher compensation and to staying true to those values of protecting student programming, enhancing student programming, and continuing to empower student achievement. That is what this board, and this system, and this community is all about. We hear about it every day. Strings empower student achievement, we know that. Immersion empowers student achievement, we know that. But so do all the countless other programs that were not discussed in budget hearings and public discussions. Needs-based staffing, an absolutely critical area for us to fund, that I'm proud to say did not endure cuts under this budget, and I thank the Superintendent for that. The point is, we stand at a crossroads here. We stand at a very true crossroads. I read every page of the program budget, and I wanted to find places where I thought in good conscious week, good consciousness, that we could cut. I didn't find one. It pained me to sit through discussions at the Budget Task Force table about what program we would have to throw on this list. It pained me deeply, and it still pains me. And I am so relieved that this budget doesn't include it, but the reality of politics is that a future budget might. And that's scary to me. I would invite any member of the community to, who does have ideas of programs, to cut, to come forward with them. We really do need to hear from you. But the challenge is that no cut, in my opinion, that this board could make in this budget would not have a detrimental impact on student learning. And I, in good faith, could not support a budget that does that. Thank you.
I have a couple of go-bags, Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Huff.
I really appreciated something that my colleague, Mr. Wilson, said earlier about the importance of being mindful that the county government had, and the board supervisors had given us a 3% guidance. And as my colleagues who served with me in the prior term know, that was a very strong mantra of mine, that we need to be collaborative with the board supervisors. We need to show that we're good partners, and we understand the value of all county services. And so, we really need to take their guidance and work as closely to it as possible. What makes this year different is that the 3% is arbitrary. The 3% wouldn't even cover the cost of employee compensation that they're promising their own employees. And it certainly wouldn't cover the cost of our healthcare increases, our pension increases. So even if we did maintenance of effort, we didn't even try to close the teacher compensation gap, they came in well short of what we needed to be able to just provide for our system what they're already forecasting to provide for theirs. So if the county executive in November in his forecast had said, "We're forecasting 3% to Fairfax County schools, and when you add in the cost for just healthcare and pension alone, well, that means we can't give them any employee, money for employee compensation." Meanwhile, on our side of the envelope, if we do the compensation plus all of our uncontrolled costs, we're looking at over 5%. Well, if we're gonna do 3% to their side and 3% to our side because we value schools as much as we value county, then I guess nobody's getting raises this year. He didn't say that. He didn't say, "We're gonna have to cut in order to get the cost of the raises, plus to be able to cover health and pension," didn't give that direction. So at this point in time, I think we've done the very best we can to honor what he's already forecasted for the county government. He's saying, "This is what we're gonna need to do right by the county government," and it's 5.5%. Ours is higher, it is 6.7, but we're trying to close a teacher compensation gap that is staggering. And they've been closing their compensation gaps for their police officers, for their firefighters over the years, and we've not received the funding to do that. And again, it goes to Dr. Garza's leadership, that we're finally embarking on something that should have been tackled years ago. And I'm proud of this effort to tackle that. So do I like the 6.7 request? It, I do understand, it's asking a lot of Fairfax County residents. But do I think that we have a constitutional responsibility to put forth a needs-based budget? Absolutely, and that's what this is. And then the supervisors, I absolutely respect the work they do. They're gonna have the most difficult decision to make. And it is gonna be the voters, as we talked about earlier tonight, on charter schools, how important it is for the voters to make their positions heard. To the voters, if you want and believe that what we have outlined as the school system's needs are important and sacred, that the needs of the county, as outlined by the county executive, are important and sacred to making this one of the best counties to live in the country, then let your voices be heard so that they can decide, in the end, how they're gonna fund both the county needs and the school needs. But for us to shortcut and only go by the 3% guidance, I would say all of us should be recalled out of office to do anything close to that. So I do want to know, Mr. Wilson and some of our new colleagues, I will always advocate that we look to be fair and equitable in what we're budgeting for and what the county's budgeting for itself. And call me a middle child, which I am, but if they're gonna spend 5.5, then we need that, plus we've got to close a teacher gap. So that's how I can comfortably get behind 6.7. And anyone who's listening in the public and thinking about this, don't get fooled by the fact that the school system doubled its ask at 6.7 over 3%. You need to be asking the county government, "And what were you forecasting to spend upon yourselves?"
Okay, Ms. Huff, to be followed by Ms. Schultz.
Thank you. Um, you know, I just wanted to say, this isn't, for me, about supporting a budget on some magic percent that was gonna get me there. It's about supporting a budget I'm confident in. Just bringing it back to the Food and Nutrition Service is part of the amendment. The $1.1 million, it was commented that that would be needed if we didn't get the step and the 1%. But if we don't get the step and the 1%, those dollars are already budgeted for in Food and Nutrition, so they can pick up the $1.1 million. So it's making sure that our dollars are in the right place and that we are confident going forward. Chairman Bolova was quoted in the paper as saying, "To meet these budget needs, we're looking at a 6% or 7% increase per $100 for each of our taxpayers." And I need to be confident that this is the right ask, when we signal to the community that we are asking for that much more from their wallets. And I want to be careful when we imply that we can't meet our goals of student success if we don't get the full ask, because we do have a great school system, and we do have employees working really hard and doing excellent work with our students. And we will continue that, and we will figure out what we need to do, whether we get the full ask or we don't get the full ask. And I want to ensure the community that we will work towards that. Thank you.
Ms. Schultz?
I just want to clarify something that my colleague, Mr. Moon, had indicated earlier. This is not about one item. And I, I very neatly navigated out that there are multiple issues. So this is not about 1/10th of 1% that this board can't restore to FNS, which is self-funding, and which already provides the cost of living increase for Food and Nutrition Service employees that we committed to. It's about 78% of our budget is funded by the local taxpayers. And that 78% is necessitated because of an imbalance in the LCI. So the 6% or 7% that Chairman Bolova referenced drives up the percentage of the, bearing the cost of the school system onto the individual homeowner, as our commercial vacancy rates are in the 18% to 20% and north of that. If you make FCPS and Fairfax County a less attractive place by increasing the burden on the taxpayers, it's gonna be harder for us to bring companies here. And those vacancy rates are gonna go up, and that becomes part of the perpetuating problem. So it is a bigger, more complex issue than that. And also, notably, a discussion that has been going on for months, which is around the fact that we have well over 2,000 students that were projected to be here that did not materialize in September. And I have been seeking and asking for clarity on where and how we account for money that last May, we got a transfer for, when we asked the board supervisors for a per-student, basically head for student enrollment projection growth. And it's very easy for us to ask for student enrollment projection growth, but then all of a sudden, all of the money is absorbed when well over 2,000, I mean, 2,115 students, that's bigger than some of our high schools. And there, there is a struggle for, on this board, trying to represent all of the voices in Fairfax County, and get down to the practicality of what are our priorities. I've been asking for a line of business review and a zero-based budget with one of my colleagues, who's no longer on the board, for years, so that we can say, "This is the thing that we care about the most." And if it is correcting inequity in our teacher, particularly our educators in our classrooms' salaries, then let's do it. But to say that in whole cloth, that all the money is absorbed, and there are no, there's no efficacy in asking for what happened to the monies for 2,115 students, and just to be given a broad-brush stroke that, "Well, you don't understand, and they're absorbed, and you don't need a teacher, you know, to be added or taken away." You know what? This is brass-tax time, and, you know, not to quote an old adage, but, you know, we're not at a million here and a million there sooner or later, you're talking about real money. We're talking about billions. And there is not a constitutional obligation, despite what Ms. McLaughlin, my colleague, said, to present a needs-based budget. There is a constitutional obligation to run this division with the utmost efficiency, according to our oath. And so this has to be taken very seriously. Nobody doesn't care about children, or doesn't care about teachers, or cares more about music, or cares more about foreign language on this board. What we're trying to do, with a great degree of affinity for understanding the needs of our constituents, our children, our teachers, and the money that flows into the system, is to deliver student achievement for the dollars that are given to us.
Okay, I think that is it. All right, I'll just close quickly with a couple of things. I just wanted to respond to one thing that I heard. It is possible to ask too much of our great educators. It is possible to underfund the school system to the point where we cannot do what we're asking people to do. Salaries matter to people. Support matters to people. We can't just keep cutting and cutting and cutting and expect magic to happen in the classroom, you know? We have to, we have to actually pay for it. We have to provide for that. And I would just say also, you know, the task force, the budget task force, quite deliberately and intentionally, did not pit one group of parents over another. In fact, they worked really hard to come up with a list of almost 100 different items, and to cost them out, and to rank them, and, but very loosely ranked them. And the effort was deliberate. "Okay, here's work that we've done, School Board, you're gonna have to, maybe, we hope not, but maybe someday you'll have to do the hard work of ranking this and making these tough choices, but we're not gonna do it for you." And so when, I really appreciate how, when we've had advocates come out here, and they, they talk about their personal stories, they talk about what brought them to this county. Fourth-grade strings, you know, why is that important to my family? Language immersion, why is that important to me? You know, they all also say, "Fully fund the whole thing, please, because, you know, Fairfax County Public Schools is great. This is how it's great to me." And, you know, I think we have to remember that those great programs that we have really do bring people here. They bring families here, they bring businesses here. I, you know, one of my schools is Fox Mill Elementary, and they have the Japanese immersion program. And when I went out there to talk to them recently, I heard so many stories of families that said, "We came to this neighborhood for this program," you know? It would have been better, easier, cheaper for us to live in Prince William or Loudoun or someplace else, but we came here for this program." And those stories, that's just an illustration of the stories that we hear over and over again, of the reasons why people come to Fairfax County for these schools. So that's the last word, perhaps. So I'm gonna call for the vote on this. And the motion is to adopt the FY 2017 advertised budget as detailed in the Superintendent's proposed budget and is reflected in the agenda item. All those in favor, please raise your hand. I have Darrenat Kofax, McElvein, Strauss, Corbett Sanders, Evans, Hines, Moon, McLaughlin, and Palczek. All those opposed. Huff, Wilson, and Schultz. The motion carries.
A call on Ms. Strauss for a follow-on motion.
Thank you. And for those who are new to the board, this is, this is simply a follow-on motion, okay? I move that the Division Superintendent be granted authority to make necessary minor changes to comply with the intent of the School Board, and is further directed to prepare fund statements reflecting all School Board approved changes, together with the estimate of funds required by the Fairfax County Public Schools during FY 2017 in the format prescribed in Section 22.1-92 of the Code of Virginia for submission to the County Board of Supervisors. Submission of these approved documents to the County Board of Supervisors fulfills the responsibilities of the School Board under Title 22, Chapter 8, Section 22.1-92 of the Code of Virginia.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Darrenat Kofax. Ms. Strauss, do you want to speak to this motion?
Uh, no, this is, this had, this is just simply required by law. It's a follow-on motion. It's not controversial.
Okay, we've had enough talking. All those in favor, raise your hand, please. And that is unanimous. Thank you. All right. Item four, the consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval by the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. I will ask Dr. Garza to say a few words after I read the consent agenda. 4.01, approve the minutes of the January 7, 2016 regular meeting. 4.02, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. 4.03, grant of easement to VDOT for public street and traffic signal control devices at Lindbrook Elementary School. To authorize the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services in consultation with staff and legal counsel to take all actions necessary and appropriate to negotiate, finalize, execute, and deliver a deed of easement to VDOT on such terms as they deem advisable, and to accept the installed improvements as full compensation for the grant of the easements. 4.04, grant of perpetual street easements to Fairfax County for public street installation of ADA ramps at Chesterbrook Elementary School. Authorize the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services in consultation with staff and legal counsel to take all actions necessary and appropriate to negotiate, finalize, execute, and deliver a deed of easement to the county on such terms as they deem advisable, and to accept the installed improvements as full compensation for the grant of the easements. 4.05, award a contract for the Hayfield Secondary School roof replacement project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. RD being incorporated in the amount of $594,960, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the School Board. 4.06, sale of house. Authorize the Division Superintendent or her designee to sign all documents associated with the sale of the house on Lot 7, 7002 Springfield Court, Springfield, Virginia, 22150 of Spring Village Estates. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda?
Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Dr. Garza?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to point out, because I think it's a perfect opportunity to do so, on tonight's agenda, we have the sale of a house. And one might wonder, what is FCPS doing in the real estate business? Well, this is, in, thanks in large part to the Foundation for Applied Technical Education, Inc., otherwise known as FATE. FATE was established and began its partnership with FCPS in 1971. And through the years, many prominent local business and industry leaders have served on the FATE board and ensured that FATE Student Enterprises had the resources and guidance necessary to be successful. And if you, if you don't know about the program, I'd encourage you to learn about it. It's something that's really, I'm very, very proud of it, I know our entire system is, and it's really a national model. Currently, FATE operates three student enterprises. The longest-standing program is the residential construction program, where carpentry, construction technologies, and electrical construction and engineering students have built and sold 22 single-family homes in McLean and Springfield. In total, FCPS students have built over 86,000 square feet of single-family homes in northern Virginia. They've also done many, many other, other projects. So I wanted to just point this out to the community, because I think it is definitely something that we should all be very, very proud of, and we're also very, very grateful for our leaders throughout the community who really rallied behind supporting this, this program. So I wanted the community to know just how involved FATE is with our CTE programs and the great work that they do with our students and teachers to provide these amazing, real-world experiences. And I want to thank so many of our people throughout the system. Dr. Presidio is here, Beth Downey, Chad Macklin is here, right over there. We're just very, very proud of the great work that's been done, and I just wanted to take, make, just to point, it's on the agenda tonight, and it's something that's very unique to FCPS, and we're very proud of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for waiting around for that recognition. Item five, new business. I call on Dr. Garza once again to introduce the Cooper Middle School AAP proposal.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, at least the board members that were here with us last year. You know that there's an entire process that we go through in order to consider a new AAP center. And that process has been followed, in this particular circumstance, with the consideration of an AAP center at Cooper Middle School. I will tell you that I have to give a lot of credit to Arlene Randall, the principal at Cooper Middle School, her faculty and staff, I'll talk more about them in just a minute, Dr. Presidio and Dr. Horn for supporting that work, Douglas Tyson. There's been lots of community engagement, there's been lots of listening to the community parents. I also want to thank the board member, Ms. Strauss, for also being involved in this decision, but it's been a slow, deliberate process. I also have to say that I've been involved in this process as well, and I've never seen a school more well-prepared to be an AAP center at a very high level. We have rubrics to measure readiness to have these kinds of programs, and Cooper Middle School and the work that they've done there checks off, without any doubt, every box. And it's a school that, you know, I think to not give them this designation would be, I think, just very disappointing to a team and a faculty and staff who've worked very, very hard to do this and do it well. And I think that's evidenced by the number of parents and children that are already choosing to go to the Cooper Middle School, who had the choice to go somewhere else. And so tonight, we have just a very short presentation for you on this item. Dr. Presidio will set the stage for that, and I know he'll talk about some of the community engagement that's been done to get us to this point and to this recommendation that's before you tonight. Dr. Presidio.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Garza, for those opening comments, and good evening to the members of the board. And I will try to keep this presentation as brief as possible. I know that it's quite late. But it is exciting to be able to bring the recommendation forward, to formally recognize Cooper Middle School as an AAP center. And again, as Dr. Garza said, definitely Arlene Randall and the entire staff at Cooper Middle School deserve so much credit for the excellent work that they've done to get the school ready. So first, I would just kind of bring your attention to a little bit of the rationale for making this recommendation at this time. Really, Cooper's been on a three-year trajectory and working over an extended period of time to, to ready their school and to make sure that they can meet all of the criteria that we have to be recognized as a center in, in FCPS. They currently have over 155 students that are base school students, AAP-eligible, that are choosing to stay at Cooper and receive their AAP services there, instead of attending the designated center that they would be enrolling in if they didn't stay at Cooper Middle School. So a lot of students are, and choosing to stay and enroll in the program. The number of AAP teachers that are on the Cooper faculty is growing. There is going to be over 20 teachers that have their AAP endorsement and certification and gifted education by the end of the year. Cooper Middle School offers the full advanced academic curriculum, so they have all of the advanced math offerings that we have in our middle school centers, geometry, honors geometry, Algebra II, honors Algebra II. They are doing a lot of really innovative work on the Cooper faculty around project-based learning, working on performance-based assessments, working on measuring and demonstrating the portrait of the graduate outcomes and attributes that we want all of our students to experience. So they really are offering the full curriculum spectrum. Additionally, they have a number of academic enrichment offerings that they provide, including computer science and coding, Science Olympiad, Math Counts, Model UN, Civics Club, Literary Magazine, and many, many others. The community support has been very strong. As I mentioned, many of the students are choosing to stay and receive their services at Cooper right now. And I think finally, formally recognizing Cooper is going to maximize the facility space in our middle schools in the region, and we'll talk about that more in a subsequent slide. So I just want to draw your attention to the formal staff recommendation at this time. And we're recommending that the board establish a formal AAP center at Cooper Middle School that would start in the 1617 school year, with the formal designation of Cooper as a center, but would allow rising 7th and 8th grade students in 1617 the option to attend Cooper or their current assigned middle school center, which would be, in this case, either Kilmer or Longfellow. In school year 1718, following our recommendations, 7th grade students would be required to attend the new Cooper Center. 8th grade students would continue to have the option to attend either Cooper or their current assigned center. And then in school year 1819, both 7th and 8th grade students would be required to attend Cooper. And that's the typical process that we've gone through, and we've opened centers over the last four years, is grandfathering students that are currently in place and phasing the expansion and the enrollment into the new center. So just a few other pieces of background that I wanted to give you about the process and the timeline. We've been very involved with community engagement. This process started back in the fall, meeting with the principals of all of the middle schools to discuss the potential recommendation to open a new center. We met with all of the staff members at the impacted schools, and we follow that by community meetings, where all of the Feeder Elementary School parents that would feed into Cooper Middle School were invited to attend, and we had quite good attendance. We had about 200 families that attended those community engagement sessions. We sent a survey in January to gauge community interest, and we provided some different options for the enrollment process and timeline, which I'll share with those results with you in just a second. And then, of course, we informed the community this, this week of the recommendation that we're bringing forward to the board tonight. Obviously, it's scheduled for new business tonight, and then a school board decision on February 18. I'm not going to spend much time on the maps, but I've provided two maps. The first map, you can see the current enrollment boundaries for the middle school centers and the Feeder Elementary Schools into those centers currently. And currently, all of the schools represented on this map are either feeding into Longfellow or Kilmer Middle School centers. And then this map is the proposed enrollment boundaries. So again, I'm not going to go through each of those individual schools, but you can see the individual schools that would feed into the new Cooper Center, and those that will continue to feed into both Longfellow and Kilmer. I did want to spend a little bit of time just talking about the enrollment capacity that we have at each of the schools. And there are three charts that are represented on this slide, and I draw your attention to the one on the top first, which is the current enrollment capacity this school year at each of the three middle schools. And you can see the current enrollment column, the capacity, and then the last column, represented in blue, for example, with Cooper Middle School, shows the amount of excess capacity that they currently have, because they're under-enrolled for their facility capacity. But with Kilmer, you see that they're over-enrolled by 100 students this school year. And then the charts on the bottom, what they're showing is the project, the projected enrollment in school year 1819, after all of the students would be enrolled in the Cooper Middle School Center if the board were to approve it. And the first chart shows what the enrollment capacity would look like if Cooper Middle School Center was not opened, and you can see that Cooper would be significantly under-enrolled for their facility capacity, and Kilmer would be significantly over-enrolled for their facility capacity. And then the final chart shows you the enrollment capacity after all of the students would be enrolled, and you can see that Cooper would appear to have 154 students over enrollment. But I want to really draw your attention to that statistic, because many of the board members will know that Cooper is in the long-term CIP plan to be slated for renovation review. That would start in the 1617 school year, looking at the boundary patterns, if we were to open Cooper as a middle school center. And it would be then gone, gone through the design process, and, and 2020 would be the first year the construction would begin on the current timeline that we have in the SIP. So we already have plans to address the enrollment issues with respect to Cooper if we do open a center there. And then, real briefly, the, the chart on this slide represents the growth of student enrollment of the number of students at Cooper Middle School that are AAP-eligible. So if you look at the 2013-14 columns towards the far right-hand side of this slide, you can see that 13% of the students attended Cooper in 1314 that were AAP-eligible. So that meant they were AAP-center eligible, and they chose to remain at Cooper Middle School and, and receive their AAP services there. And as you follow that across to 1415, you see that that percentage grew to 16.9% of those students choosing to remain at Cooper. And in 1516, almost 33% or a third of the students this current school year are choosing to stay at Cooper, even though it's not formally designated as a center, and receive their AAP services there. So we presented two options to the community. The first option would start in 1617, and 7th grade students would be required to attend the new, the new Cooper Center, and 8th grade students would have the option. Option two, in 1617, both 7th and 8th grade students enrollment at Cooper would continue to be optional. In 1718, under option one, both 7th and 8th grade students would be required to attend at that point, but under option two in 1718, the 7th grade students would be required to attend, and 8th grade students would have the option. So the option number two is the option that we're recommending as it phases that enrollment in, in terms of the enrollment requirement for students. And we surveyed the community, and one of the questions that we asked them is which option that they would prefer, option one or option two. The community, when we've done surveys like this in the past, generally favor the grandfathering or the rolling options to expand programs. And here, you can see that that was still the case, with the majority of the families choosing option two as their preferred option by about 10 percentage points. So again, our formal recommendation that's before you tonight is for option two, to start the enrollment process on a gradual basis. But in 1617, we're asking that the board name Cooper as a formal middle school center with that designation, and begin the enrollment process on an optional basis in 1617 with required enrollment in the 1819 school year. So I'm not sure if there's any questions, but I'd be happy to discuss any of this in more detail.
Okay. Ms. Strauss?
I just want to thank everybody's involvement in the process. This has been gradual, and I am very proud of the, of the program and the curriculum that's being offered at Cooper. It is just, they are cutting-edge. And in fact, some of the curriculum, the project-based learning, the very high-level programming that really speaks to a portrait of the graduate, I hope that other schools come and visit Cooper and see what they are doing. It is very, very exciting, and it is, it's interesting, when you look at the, the survey from the parents, you even had fairly strong support for starting this in the fall, which would be, you know, requiring a pretty last-minute deal here. So there is very strong support to move forward with this. For whatever reason, Langley has not had a middle school AAP center for the Pyramid. And what this does is it brings within Pyramid, and within the Langley Pyramid, the possibility to serve the students in a coherent pattern from elementary, middle, to high school, which is also something that is very much wanted by this community. It makes it more efficient. The transportation is already provided, obviously, within the Pyramid, so when it is fully operational, it'll actually save money, because this is a more efficient way to offer this service. So Cooper is very excited. So thank you very much for your help.
And again, the staff and the administration there have done a fantastic job to get the school ready, so thank you.
Dr. Garza?
I would just add, and I don't want to belabor it, but this is an important decision, because we have to, in my view, do this to justify, we're going to, we're about to invest some significant money in the school, spending the long-range CIP, and when we do that, we add capacity at the middle school level, so it justifies and really maximizes that facility. At the same time, we have overcrowding at Kilmer and Longfellow that need to be addressed. Kilmer has 19 portable buildings, and Longfellow is also overcapacity. Both of the, all three principals have been working very, very closely together, so there's, there are no surprises, so I think that's important. And there's still, there's so many students that qualify for the program, that there's still critical mass at each of the three schools. So it will not have a detrimental effect on any of the existing programs, and I think that's why, you know, I think our parents, maybe because no one signed up tonight, and I've not gotten, I think people feel like we've listened to them, they feel like, I think, certainly, the work that's been done at Cooper in preparation for it speaks for itself, and the faculty and staff there have done a really good job of helping parents know about what they are doing differently, and, and how compelling that has been, because of the choices that people are making. So I would just want to say a little bit more about the capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Presidio, and all the staff for all this work. I know that these changes are always very labor-intensive, and we can see that the community has been hard, and, and so, thank you. I think that's it, then.
All right.
You can go home. Okay. We'll continue on new business, item five. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 5.01, what we just heard about just now, to authorize the establishment of a new advanced academic center program in fall 2016 at Cooper Middle School, and further recommend that in fall 2016, Cooper-based, rising 7th and 8th grade center-eligible students currently assigned to Kilmer and Longfellow have the option to attend the new Cooper Middle School Center or their current center. In fall 2017, Cooper-based, rising 7th grade students currently assigned to Kilmer and Longfellow will be required to attend Cooper's Center. Rising 8th grade students in fall 2017 will have the option to attend Cooper or their current center. In fall 2018, Cooper-based, rising 7th and 8th grade center-eligible students will be required to attend the Cooper Level 4 Center. Item 5.02, award a contract for Robison Secondary School roof replacement project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 5.03, award a contract for the Stratford Landing Elementary School renovation project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Item 5.04, student representative election. Approve the proposed provisions to Policy 1802 to change the timing for the election of the student representative to the school board by the Student Advisory Council from February to April, effective in the 2017-18 school year. Item six, superintendent matters. I call on Dr. Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. FCPS has been named one of the charter members of the Green Schools Alliance District Collaborative, a group of only 21 school systems in a group of only 21 school systems in the United States that will combine their collective power to support greener, more efficient solutions to environmental sustainability. And we're very proud of that because it's been a priority of the school system for a long time. The new collaborative will work to build and share best practices, leverage combined purchasing power to increase access to sustainable alternatives, promote market transformation, and influence policy decisions for school systems. FCPS is an active Get to Green program, established five years ago by a group of principals looking to share information and resources on how to use the environment as an integrating concept for instruction and community building. Get to Green focuses on engaging students in solid environmental practices. FCPS currently has 80 registered National Wildlife Federation Eco-Schools and 12 Green Flag Schools, the highest award an eco-school can achieve. More than 90 wildlife habitats and more than 55 edible gardens. FCPS also has 146 Energy Star-certified schools, more than any other school system in the United States. So we're very proud of that work, and we thank everyone who's been a part of the great success in this program. I also want to thank the members of the hospitality community for attending the Business Round Table yesterday at Chantilly High School Academy. We had a great discussion, of course, a great meal by our wonderful students and the Culinary Academy there at Chantilly High School. I want to thank Chef Double Day and his culinary students for their hospitality and hosting us yesterday. We had a really good turnout. Earlier this evening, we recognized our wonderful employees, our custodians, school counselors, and career and technology, technical educators. And I think, again, it is important for us to acknowledge what great employees we have, and really thank very, very much the wonderful dedication and work of these wonderful employees. And then finally, as Ben Press earlier commented, I really want to extend my deepest appreciation to all of our wonderful facilities employees, custodial staff, Jeff Plattenberg and his team, all of our principals. There were so many hours and hours and hours of preparation in getting our schools ready following the blizzard, and they were out right away, working hard. And it was hard work, and you've seen the evidence of that, snow piled up. But they were working quickly, as soon as they could, they got out. Many of us were unable to get out, in some cases. They made it out to start working on our schools, so there were hours and hours of preparation. So very, very grateful for that. Also very proud of our leadership team, lots of late-night, early-morning calls, middle-of-the-night calls, you know, trying to make the very right, the right decision for our schools. And I think we did that, and I know it's really hard. And I do have to particularly compliment Jeff Plattenberg, who, he has the largest burden during that process, so we really appreciate his leadership and diligence. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Item 7, Board Committee Reports. I call on Ms. Strauss for updates on the budget public hearing and the budget work session.
Thank you very much. On Thursday, we went forward with our budget public hearing. And again, thank you, Mr. Plattenberg, for making this facility available, so that, even though the rest of the county wasn't in great shape, we were able to go forward with the public hearing. We had over 80 speakers and about 30 students, and it was, it's wonderful to see our students, our young people come. They are articulate, they are well-prepared, and it's a testament to the type of education that they get every day, their parent support and everything else. But the students were wonderful. Monday, we had a budget work session. It was an opportunity to review budget questions and for school board members to continue to get individual answers to their questions. Thank you.
Okay, I call on Ms. Evans for a report on our forum of earlier this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At our forum tonight, we decided to add a work session on Monday to discuss pre-Labor Day starts, whether to pursue a waiver on Labor Day start times, and if so, whether to initiate that for the 1617 school year or the 1718 school year and beyond. We also decided to start audio taping our policy discussions at school board work sessions.
Okay, thank you. Next, item 8, Board Matters. I call on Ms. Darnatt Kofax.
Thank you. I guess I should say, welcome back, huh? After all those snow days. But I have to say, I, for one, as the parent of a junior, enjoyed some of the time to get caught up, for her, for her to get caught up. So that was, but it was fun building snowmen, and we had a good time. But, so, there were some things canceled and some things moved forward. But, so, on February 9th, I will be attending Franconia Elementary School PTA to have a budget conversation. I will be joining my colleagues, Ms. Hines and Mr. McElveen, at the VSPA Capital Conference, and you can bet we will be talking to our elected state legislators about our needs at our schools. And finally, I have a coffee, grounded coffee, on Thursday, February 16th, at 9:30 in the morning, and I hope to see many of you there. Thank you.
Mr. McElveen?
So this week is full of special events, the first of which we are celebrating tonight is the birthday of Susan Quinn. And we gave her a very nice present tonight with a past budget, so enjoy. And we also celebrated this week Dr. Garza's birthday, so happy birthday, Dr. Garza. And then, coming later this week, is Lunar New Year, and it's going to be the Year of the Monkey, which is a very auspicious year. There will be plenty of babies. I'm not promising anything from me, but, and then, I do look forward to joining Ms. Darnatt Kofax and Ms. Hines in Richmond, provided we don't get snowed out.
Okay, Ms. Huff?
Yes, I'll just be brief. So many things did get snowed out, but I was able to make it to a tour of some of our alternative schools, which was really appreciated. So thank you, Dr. Litt, for getting that together, and for the schools taking the time to show us, and the student ambassadors who did an awesome job. And going forward, in the same vein, next week I'll be attending Mountain View's graduation, so I look forward to that. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Strauss?
Thank you, being one who took a very long time to be able to get out of my residence. It took a front-end loader and a lot of other things. I, again, though, would like to thank Mr. Plattenberg and all of our folks, who, our schools were prepared to be reopened again much before the roads and the sidewalks were. So again, and I did stop and thank some of our custodians who I encountered, who were shoveling, and making sure that everything was ready. So they really worked hard, they did a great job. And I'm very pleased that the weather cooperated, and finally, we've gotten some snow melt, and who knows going forward. But looking forward now to being able to get back out into schools, a lot of events have been rescheduled, those of you who are planning on attending the Thomas Jefferson Play. It will go on at, let's see, 1617, because it was supposed to be on January 23rd. And in fact, let's see if I can make it go forward. Their first weekend, which is the 19th, the weekend of the 19th, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, is going to be at Thomas Jefferson. The next weekend is going to be at Hayfield. So for those who have marked your calendars to watch our wonderful students at Thomas Jefferson, their play will be in two different places on two different weekends because of scheduling. So anyway, I'll be there cheering them on and looking forward to it. Thanks.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you. I would like to echo the thanks to Mr. Plattenberg and his team for the yeoman's work in getting our schools ready to open this week. I would also like to thank the community members that came out and actually shoveled sidewalks and cleared bus stops when they were, when they realized that that was the impediment to opening schools. So a big shout-out to both our own staff, but a nice partnership with the community to make that happen. Would also like to send a second shout-out to Mr. Plattenberg's team in that Kevin Sneed and Amy Holborn came out to the Mount Vernon Council of Civic Associations and spent a lot of time talking about how we plan for boundaries and how we do projections, and gave a lot of enlightening input on the new GIS system. So thank you very much to that, as well as to Assistant Superintendent Terry Dade and Executive Principal Grace Taylor, who came out in the midst of the snowmageddon to meet with community members regarding the new principal selection process at Mount Vernon High School, which we're optimistic that we'll have somebody to fill that role in the near future. Looking forward, I have had an opportunity to get out to some of our schools, in particular the Key Center, was a wonderful way of spending a morning with the principal and staff there, and I am just so impressed with how the staff, the students of Key Middle School, the students and volunteers from the community work together to have winning together every day. So a big shout-out there. And looking forward to meeting with the Holland Meadows Elementary School PTA next week, and going to the orientation for new school board members in Richmond next week, as well as the Mountain View in Bryant Commencements. And West Potomac High School is doing a fundraiser, a joint effort with the PTSA, the Athletic Boosters, and business community to raise funds to help finance an outdoor classroom. So people are invited to come out and, once again, show how our community gets behind our schools on the 13th of February. Thank you very much.
Ms. Evans?
Unfortunately, a sorrowful note that our former colleague Tina Hohn lost her beloved husband, Duchan, recently, and I just want to say our hearts go out to her and her family.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. McElveen, just to be exact, the lunar calendar New Year is on Monday, and many of the members in the community, especially those in the Asian community, were celebrating New Year's Day on Monday, along with me. Earlier today, there was another New Year's Day celebration at Fox Mill Elementary School, there's their Japanese immersion program, had special celebration. So I had an opportunity to visit there, and I, you know, several classes, but I spent most of my time in 5th grade classes. And Dr. Garza, I must report to you that I was quite impressed at the level of language skills acquired and being practiced by these youngsters, 5th graders. Even though this was many, many years ago, I had one year of Japanese when I was in college, when I was in college, at a very, very expensive college, paying a lot of tuition. But these 5th graders were far better than I am. And I am, I was so happy for them and happy for your staff, you know, teaching them so well.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, I would like to just thank Dr. Garza for allowing me to go to the business luncheon at Chantilly High School this week. It was a wonderful chance to meet the business community members. And like Ms. Huff, I also visited the alternative schools, which are, just, I was astounded at what's happening in Fairfax County at those schools. Really, really, really something to be proud of.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I want to just quickly thank both our teachers and our families, who really did handle the unexpected closures of snow. It's very, very difficult to have a week and a half off, and I know that it presented some challenges also for our working families with elementary school children. And I know our school system is very mindful of trying to reduce any time that we have to close schools. But, Dr. Garza, we certainly appreciate the fact that student safety is an utmost priority, and the conditions of the roads for our walkers and for students who took the buses. As we saw the calls throughout the region, it was the right thing to do. And so I did want to just make that point, because this was kind of a tough week for students. And I also want to give a special thanks to Deputy Steve Lockhart. I know you worked very hard in trying to help our educators look at trying to balance an end of a quarter, and also helping students adjust coming back into the classroom. And so I appreciate that effort, and I know as we work with a division of our size, it can be challenging to get that type of consistency, so we'll get there. But I also just want to thank everyone within Mr. Plattenberg's department. Again, what a Herculean effort. I've lived here on the East Coast now for 30 years, and I don't think I've endured that much snow in one particular snowfall. So it was a lot, and, you know, please do convey to all those who work so hard on behalf of the division that many of us here on the board, we're all applauding them and expressing our appreciation to that. And to all the students who made it through second quarter, I hope you enjoy the three days to recover, because I know it was a marathon of learning for many of you, especially in the high school level. And here's to Mother Nature just giving us a break in Virginia, and let's have some nicer weather for a while to come.
Ms. Schultz?
Just a follow-on to the calendar conversation. We did have a calendar conversation in the forum. I know people are anxious about the pre- and post-labor day calendar decision, and we will have a decision. We committed to it on Monday regarding the 1617 calendar. I know a lot of kids contacted me, were very stressed out about the quarter end. The same thing happened last year, and I did ask during the forum that we address flexibility within the calendar to look at ways to be responsive if something like this should happen again. And so I look forward to that conversation. I know that that is a very big issue for kids and stress, particularly at the high school level. I want to, speaking of high school level, I want to send a shout-out to one of my constituents, Riley O'Hara. She is a Robinson student, and she won first place in the science fair in the energy area, and it was for enhanced rocket stoves to improve health of impoverished women worldwide. And when you see that kind of thing coming from young students in our, in our system, it just, you know, makes, makes my heart grow and be very, very fond of what we're doing and what they're accomplishing. The last thing is, I don't want to end on a negative, but I do want to go back to what's happening in Richmond. And I am not a fan of our state legislators getting pulled off into more unfunded mandates, like a mandated 20-minute recess. And I got to tell you, that's on both sides of the aisle. So whether it's Chat Peterson or Dick Black, we have enough problems of our own in Fairfax County and across the Commonwealth. And if you would spend the time, instead of mandating a 20-minute recess out of Richmond, and further constricting the day of children in school, and let us worry about that part, and you worry about how to fix the LCI funding, then things will go a lot better. But when I see things like 20-minute recess, unfunded mandate bills, and tampon tax, feminine hygiene relief bills, it makes me very angry, because that is not what I think my legislators should be doing in Richmond. So hoping that message gets through.
Ms. Palchuk?
I'll be brief. Just want to end with a very positive note and shout-out the Get to Green team. They are fabulous, Elaine Tolan and the whole team. Very much enjoyed meeting with them and hope to continue to work with them, and looking forward to heading down to Richmond with my fellow new board members next week. And also, happy African-American History Month. I know the Tinnerhill Foundation, Heritage Foundation has done quite a bit about the history of false church, the black history in false church. So I hope we find ways to celebrate that this month. Thank you.
Thank you all. And I just want to say, if you're not aware, these are cupcakes. Thank you very much, Lucia. I peeked at mine, and it's, honestly, it's almost too beautiful to eat. So I'm going to take it home and eat it with my best friend.
to take it home and eat it with my best fork. So, thank you all very much. We are adjourned.
I need Ryan's best fork with this.